It is six thirty and I call this meeting to order. It is July nineteenth. And I will start with roll call. Mayor Pro-Tam Villa Lobos. Councilmember Bunker.
Here.
Councilmember Styler appears to be absent. Councilmember McClabb.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I am Mayor Glaze. If you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. And if you remain standing for the invocation, please. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord God, we are grateful to you, Lord God, for this beautiful little town. We are grateful for the leadership. We're grateful for all of the volunteers that just helped to make it run very smoothly. Lord God, we just ask for your guidance as we go forward tonight. We have so many things to discuss and decide, and we just need your guidance in everything that we say and do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, I see we have a couple of public comments. Thank you. And. The first one would be Carol Devini.
There was a series of misunderstandings for the Parks Advisory Report. So I'm reporting it this time so that we have it for this full year 2022. The purpose and objective of ordinance ninety-three point oh one, the purpose and objective of this chapter is to provide clear rules and regulations for the governance and maintenance of city parks and to control activities where necessary to allow citizens to enjoy city parks free from disturbance and/or danger caused by the facility. The report is only going to reflect from February of 2022. I requested the last two-year council reports, and there were none found or provided before this was recorded. So the only ones that I've been at are from February twenty-two on to July seventh. This is going to be corrected in the future. Park Advisory Board minutes have been already given to the city clerk for future record-keeping purposes, and they will be on file. The proposed Parks and Master Plan, Adrian Flores and Jared Anable spent a considerable amount of time explaining the proposed Parks Master Plan in February of 2022. They are to be commended as to their time compiling the data, producing a document easy to read, and helping the Parks Advisory Board understand the need for a plan to spend funds in a well-thought-out manner that reflects the citizens' wishes and to be good stewards of city funding. They deserve city council recognition for their efforts toward making this plan. Parks Advisory Board appreciates the opportunity to read, comment, and help fulfill the need for a city park plan to reflect the citizens' participation as to the purpose and needs of a well-thought-out, vibrant city park development. We will focus on the working with Adrian Flores to quickly finish the advisory board portion so the plan may be presented to city council. The need to develop a plan consistent throughout all parks will unify the look of the parks as well as give guidance to council for spending in a planned and circumspect manner that is paramount at this time. Chain of command. Members of the Parks Advisory Board have commented several times there needs to be a clearer picture of the process between Parks Advisory Board and city council. This has been discussed with city administrator and city clerk, but there appears to be a disconnect in the process which leaves confusion between Parks Advisory and the expectations of the Parks Advisory. The recommendation of the Parks Advisory Board is to further work with city administrator and city clerk to clear up the purpose of Parks Advisory Board and the interaction with city council. Agenda items to be that were discussed in 2022. Again, I'm going to say this is only since February. Due to the changes in personnel on the Parks Advisory Board, there have been a lack of forward progress. As we settle into our roles, recognize the pressing needs of the parks and research information needed to logically discuss and decide on items presented to the city council. There will be better communication from the Parks Advisory Board. A spreadsheet has been developed to track agenda items and the decisions made. Parks Advisory to retain a record for next year's. There's currently twenty-one items on our spreadsheet, the things to do. Do you have a second more?
Yes.
Thank you. The priority will be placed on helping complete the proposed Parks Master Plan, a plan processed by the Parks Advisory Board to address agenda items and finish unresolved items in a timely manner, reporting consistently to the city council on Parks Advisory Board recommendations, and recommend updates to the City of Martindale Chapter Ninety-three, Parks Recreation Area, to better reflect a more defined purpose and new trends in the City of Martindale park system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very thoughtful. Next up is Matthew McGovern.
Hello, folks. I just wanted to talk about Skull Road. We had a new neighbor developing the land down there, and as you all are well aware, they're recluding and not allowing our public to have access to Skull Road entrance anymore. Obviously, not a very neighborly thing for them to be doing. I understand this is their property. I'd like to at least propose to the city council to either annex and/or purchase that property and make that part of the park because I don't know what purpose they would have of that little sliver of land, and obviously, it would definitely help in the well-being of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sonia Villa Lobos.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to the meeting. Sonia Villa Lobos. I'm saying this as a community member, but it's just last month was June, and I know that I had wanted a proclamation, but I know that just due to everything on the agenda, and we have a lot of stuff going on, I just wanted to make sure, just to say these kind of words, just to recognize Juneteenth and Pride Month. So it's just been recent. Well, Juneteenth is a federal holiday and expanding celebration for the LGBTQ communities. More and more people are becoming not only aware of these important celebrations, but also of the complexity of their origin, the communities they represent and their meaning. Both Juneteenth and Pride Month reveal that often broad transformations begin from within communities pushing for a change and recognition. We must recognize the limits of our knowledge and dig deeper to recognize the complexity of these events and the ways in which these celebrations can teach us about the organizational world from which they sprung. When we embrace the richness, diversity, and complexity of our shared history, the healthier we become as a nation and as a community. Rather than try to eliminate elements of our national and global stories that make us uncomfortable, we will be better equipped to solve increasingly challenging problems of our present and future by listening to voices from our most vulnerable and marginalized communities so we could discover and acknowledge the gaps in knowledge that must be built in order to solve the wicked problems that we face. The spectrum that these events represents demonstrates that there is room for everyone to celebrate the community in their own way and, more importantly, space for us to support the rights and freedom of all of our neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is Chelsea James.
Hi, Angela. I'm Chelsea. I'm a local business owner here in Martindale, and I'm also one of the organizers for what I hope to be Martindale's first annual River Innovation Day, something I think everybody loves, is the river. So August thirteenth on Main Street from five to ten p.m., we're going to have a little celebration of the San Marcos River, and it'll be located on Main Street. Ideally, you'd love to close down the street and have vendors on the street, and then the actual festivities will take place on the lawn across the street from the cafe next door to Good Things. So with the opening of the new river park, I think it's imperative that we do our part in educating the public, the locals, and tourism alike on the ways we can all use the river recreationally and responsibly. The event's main focus will be river education and awareness. The goal is to obviously raise awareness of the importance of protecting our rivers and streams by promoting good environmental stewardship and let it showcase City of Martindale's vigilance on passing the disposable container ban like so many other towns should be doing. And let's recognize those organizations and individuals who have dedicated their time and efforts to keeping the river clean. So just a quick summary of the events for the evening. River education and awareness booths from local river stewardship organizations. The San Marcos River Foundation will be here with a booth as well as the Eyes of the San Marcos River. This group of individuals, these are the guys that are really out there in the trenches. They're doing these huge, massive cleanups weekly right here in Martindale. So I think it's time we kind of recognize them. So we'd also be giving out river stewardship awards to those organizations and a few individuals like the Tom Goins family and Joy Youngers. We'll also have some sustainable giveaways, items obviously that are in compliance with the non-disposable container ban, like tumblers that you can put your drinks in and get rid of the part here that you see that Sonia's got in front of her. There'll be stuff like this. As well, the nonprofits will also be doing giveaways. It'll be t-shirts, hats, totes, things that everybody can use. And what I'm most excited about is the special performance by the Central Texas Ensemble. This will be their third or fourth time to dance in Martindale, so they're really excited about it. We have a group coming from all the way to Houston to dance, so it's pretty exciting. And they're going to dance just to honor the town, the river, and everybody attending, so it's going to be a great experience, especially for children. And then the night market. Martindale's never had a night market, and we have a lot of local talented artisans that sell vintage items, sustainable items. So we're not going to just... It'll be most of our vendors that we usually have at the Second Sunday Market, but we'll also have vintage items, which I'm really excited about. And then live music to close out the evening. So we're hoping to book a Tejano band. That's a student department working on that. But yeah, that pretty much sums up the events. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask the young lady a question? That I know I can't talk, but can I? I need a question.
And we're not supposed to hit it.
Okay.
We'll have to ask her later.
Thank you. I tried.
At this time, we have Thomas Turf that will give us a presentation on our proposed grant, three different options. So I'm going to move to another.
This is all the space I'm in the issue. All right. Thank you. As the mayor said, my name is Tom Turk. I'm with Brooklyn Engineering Group, and I'm going to give you a presentation on your grant project. Hopefully, at the end of my presentation, I'll get some direction from the council on what's going to be in the project. First of all, I want to introduce Al Scar of the reality. He's an engineer in office. He's going to be taking notes and passing things out and making sure that I don't say anything wrong from that. So just a little history. A couple of years ago, the city applied for a grant and received a grant for about five point four million dollars in construction to build some drainage and roadway improvements in Martindale. This top sketch that you see here represents the project that was submitted along with the grant application and was funded for about five point four million dollars in construction. One of the challenges that we're dealing with is that in the last couple of years, inflation has caused that cost estimate to increase to eight point two million dollars. We cannot spend eight point two million dollars because we don't have it. So we have to downsize the project back to about five point four million dollars. So projects are going to have to shrink, and that's one of the reasons why we're bringing some options to you. Not only that, but it is a requirement for a federally funded project that we, as the engineers, show you different alternatives on how to accomplish the project goal in different ways so that you have options to consider. That's a requirement. So we have to go off, do some thinking, come back to you with alternatives, whether you like them or not, and have you consider them. And that's part of what we're going to do tonight is show you some details on those alternatives. So let me kind of step back and help you understand, I guess, the problems that we're trying to solve with the construction of this project. The fundamental goal of the project is to fix the drainage problems that exist on Northwest River Road and in the area. And the problem that we generally have is that we have a lot of water that comes from Highway eighty across this pasture. And the natural geography allows that water to flow across Plains Drive, and then it flows into Northwest Parkway and then into the ravine that separates the two cemeteries. The problems that we were told and have observed is that water generally plods in this area, doesn't drain well, and it's hard to drive during storms. And then we have a large amount of water that crosses over these properties, and it goes into the right-of-way here where the road basically becomes the drainage channel. And so it's very difficult to drive here. As you all are aware, this whole project area is within the Hundred Deer Flood Plain of the San Marcos River. There's no money that we can spend to fix that. So we are basically designing for a lesser storm, about a ten-year storm, which is roughly forty or fifty percent of a Hundred Deer Storm. So during those lesser events, we'll be able to solve some of the drainage problems. But during a Hundred Deer Storm, it's going to flood anyway. Just want everybody to understand that. So. We were asked to conceive this project in about thirty days for the grant application. And what was submitted with the grant was this. What we called for was a very large drainage ditch here that allowed water to flow into a large box culvert system within the right-of-way of Northwest River Flow, stayed in the right-of-way, and then we would empty into the ravine between the two cemeteries. And then we also had some smaller storm drain systems, maybe twenty-four, thirty-six-inch diameter pipes that would allow us to pick up water here, here, and here and get that water to flow into this box culvert and then through the road down the ravine. That's basically where the water goes today and doing our best to emulate that. We want the water to go same route into the same outfall area down here at the ravine. We also called for the reconstruction of River Road between Lockhart all the way through the S-curves and then all the way down to Quell Run to include a replacement of this culvert here at Quell Run, a replacement of this culvert here at Lockhart, just for the old. Figured we would reconstruct the whole intersection to include that box culvert there. And as I said before, the cost estimate two years ago was about five point four million. Today, it's eight point two. So obviously, we've got to cut. How's my math on that? About three point two million dollars out of the project. Please be mindful that to solve the drainage problems here and throughout the project, we pretty much got to do that. That's what I'm calling the core project, and that's going to be reflected in option one and in all the options. We've got to do this if we're going to achieve the basics of the grant. So most of the cuts are going to take place here, and we've got some other options for you to look at. Were you able to pass our... So the handout is meant to give you an idea of what each of these options call. That's the top half. There's the options one, two, and three. And the bottom half of that spreadsheet has some optional improvements. So in each one of the options, we're going to have some money left over in our budget, and we need to decide what we want to do with that money. For example, the last time I was here, there was a desire for sidewalks, pedestrian and bicycle improvements in the project areas. But we've added to that list of improvements a something called a shared-use path, which is just a fancy word for pedestrian and bicycle, and we've got money in there for just a sidewalk. And we have a dollars-per-linear foot figure there. So that if you just do the math, you can figure out how much sidewalk you can build with the money that you have left. So it's just kind of a helpful figure to decide what we want to do. So that's a good reference as I'm talking about the options, and then I'll go through each one of the optional improvements. So option one is basically the grant, what I call the grant project for the base project. And I just explained that to you. And what we've done is we've looked at just the base project area, which is Lockhart going through the S-curves and then ending. And that cost estimate was just short, just a little above five million dollars, five million fifty thousand dollars. We have a budget of... What's our budget, Al Scar? Three point... Five point four? So we have about three, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of optional improvements that we could do. Hopefully, we'll get through to that. There are two other alternatives for that base project. The second alternative is this. So our base job, the culvert system, goes all the way down to the ravine here. We said to ourselves, if we can get to the river in a shorter distance, we can save money on the box culvert, which is a good bit of the cost. And so we searched for places where we could reach the river feasibly, and we found that this location here could possibly work. And this is the culvert going across the McGovern property. I believe this is your property, sir?
Yes, sir.
So in essence, what we would do is construct an outfall here at the San Marcos River. We would construct the box culvert just along the property line there. And then that box culvert would continue, just like in the original plan, to the first turn here, and then it would tie into the ditch we talked about. Then we would have basically the same type of storm sewer system that we had in the original grant, that picks up all the water that comes here and takes it there.
So you do away with the creek? Would you still use the creek?
We still have...
Eliminate the creek?
We still need storm sewer along Northwest River Road. And this alignment here now is much smaller, but we have a need for inlets and a smaller storm sewer system to take it to the ravine. It's just a lot smaller. We're going with a curved direction. And we have a smaller system here, and that's saving us some... Similarly, in option three, we have an alignment going through the... What's the name of the... Grilly? Are they here this evening?
They're southern of us.
Okay, great. Thanks for coming. So similarly, we have an outfall here. We would construct the box culvert along the property line here and then take the box culvert straight up to this point, and we would tie it to that same channel that we've been...
Quick question for you, Mr. Turk.
Yes, sir.
Is this price including buying easement or buying property on those two properties?
This is just construction.
That doesn't include having to pay them for the use of their land or access or...
We're just...
Strictly construction costs? Thanks.
And then we would still have a shorter, smaller culvert system here to pick up the water that still comes here. And then we still need a storm sewer system out here in Northwest River Road that upfalls into the ravine.
So in option two and three, McGovern or Zangrilly, as you mentioned, the culverts, I mean, do you still have to have a perpetual easement once the culverts are installed?
Absolutely.
How wide does the easement need to be?
I would say somewhere around a twenty-five-foot easement, permanent.
With fences or just flat ground? It's just flat ground?
You wouldn't even see them. You would only see the culverts right down at the bank. All of this is underground. All of this is underground.
Quick question. Option... You guys want to question? Yes, yeah. Option one, so you say construction cost only, so we still have to acquire some property on...
Yes.
On the...
Option one requires about ten parcels.
I'll say it right here.
Option two requires five...
I got you.
Am I reading it right?
Six.
And then three, five. Options two and three do cost less, somewhere around four or five hundred thousand dollars less compared to option one. However, that's about the only advantage there is. So the plus is they're a little cheaper. But there are some pretty significant disadvantages. One is, as you can tell, we're diverting flow. Today, the water goes through the ravine and enters into the San Marcos River where it's done for a hundred feet. If we do this option, then we're diverting a lot of the water to this point. And we're diverting a lot of the water to this point. So in here, when you divert water, there can be legal issues. Anything bad that might happen between here and here or here and here in the future, you may be responsible for.
Did you do any modeling on that? Is there any modeling done? If when a flood did occur, it would affect the rise of the river, say, upstream or downstream?
We have not.
Okay.
But it will have an effect. That effect would be nominal, but there would be some. In the civil engineering and the legal... In the civil engineering and the legal world. You don't want to divert flows unless you really have no other alternative. And we do have. Another alternative. So this is a, this is a big negative. This could, this could result in legal issue. Obviously. Huge impact on McGovern property, trees, some nice looking lot. And we would go in there and construct these box culverts would be, which would be. Very damaging to their property. So. That's it. Another problem that we have is these two outfalls don't exist today. Uh, the federal government regulates the San Marcos River as a rivers of the United States. So we would have to get it permitted. And that would cause uh, schedule issues. My best guess, it would probably take one to two years to get that permit. Not only that, uh, but as you know, over time, the bank of a river moves. It shifts, it's all part of natural geology. And we can, we can stabilize the bank along with the construction of box culvert. But at the end of the day, the river always waves. Uh, and this this basically becomes a maintenance issue for the city of Martinville.
Um, I have a question. The the culvert in between the cemetery, that, as you mentioned, is a long established culvert that's been there for. A hu- hu- hundred years. And I think the width of it must be thirty feet and the height of it must be sometime fifteen to twenty feet high. It's it is a very wide culvert. And I think it would accommodate a lot of water. In the past, you mentioned about building and I wanted a filtration system because I was thinking of all the water running off through the road and the grease and all that. But you said you would have a rock screen, some kind of. Is that more for erosion control or to have some kind of filtration in place?
Yeah, uh, we would have downstream of that culvert, what I call armoring, or some kind of stabilization of the ravine at the bottom. So that it it doesn't erode out. And that can be several different types of armoring. It could be concrete riprap. It could be large stones, uh, things like that. Uh, I'm I'm thinking stonework, uh, but we don't know yet whether uh. The rock will be appropriate for the velocities that we have. But there will be some kind of armoring necessary.
My option two and three, then is that just gonna gonna be an outflow pipe or will it have gradual riff riff raft and rock?
It'll require the same type of armoring.
So it'll be set back from the boundary of the river?
Yes, a little bit. You'll you'll actually see the culvert and the outfall at the ends at the bank. Now, this is, this is relatively flat down here where you tie into the river. Here it's very steep. So this is a, this is a very difficult outfall to construct.
Would would you fence those off? Would for safety, would those have to be fenced off if you're talking a big culvert that's steep and wide and?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
I I guess I got a question for the attorney. And for you, but and for you, Mr. Tur. You know, the fifteen flood across at the San Marcos River Ranch, I think one house was was within inches of getting flooded. Could they potentially sue us? Say, for example, we had a fifteen event and say, well, you you've changed the river flow. In fifteen, my house didn't flood. Now I'm flooded. I'm gonna sue the city of Martinville because you have diverted the water.
Probably not. I've had to deal with this with another city before. So the the prevention of the water code he's talking about. It it only imposes liability if you divert or encounter the flow of water to the extent. That the diversion of the impoundy was what actually causes the damage. And so if fifteen would be.
Sure.
Essentially what happened in this in this other case, there was a dip right here in the land. And the people had their house over here. And what they said is you diverted this ditch to where it came out here and it caused the water to come up here because you put trash in there and. So it diverted. Well, the problem was the water was up here.
Okay.
So it wouldn't matter what happened down here. Because of this, the 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 whole point is when you have something like two thousand fifteen, that's effectively what you call an act of God. And and you you would have to have credible and competent evidence that what the city did was sufficient to cause the damage or the harm. And something like that, the water flow would be so extreme, so great. Uh, if it's if it's already covering everything. You're not gonna be able to say that it's what the city.
You had asked, you know, whether we've done hydraulic studies or not. They're very expensive. Uh, and we're gonna do hydraulic studies as part of the final design. But we're we're. But they're very predictable as far as what we think they'll tell us. Obviously, the amount of discharge in the San Marcos River. Increases upstream if you if you build the outfall here. And so in this area here, you have more discharge than you had before. And that makes. Water surface elevations go up. Now, the San Marcos River is a big river, huge flood plain, and the impact is gonna be. Miniscule, but there will be some. It might be hundreds of them. But you you're looking at a no rise situation here where where we don't want to raise the San Marcos River elevation. That just exasperates uh, what we're trying to accomplish and. Exposes you to some liability that you would would should avoid.
I guess my next question, you're talking about the row easement parcels. You go ten, six and five. Ten was basically on the side of Northwest, just the base of the edge of San Marcus River or Northwest River Road, right?
Most of the parcels in that ten count are along here. There are one, two, three where we're just looking like we're gonna take this up.
So.
We may be able to design that away. But just to be conservative, we put them in the parcel count.
I I'm just talking about human nature. I can't predict people's people's behavior or attitude, but. I'm just saying myself, but I'm saying you you'd probably have less issues if you went for the ten parcels in the six and the five. Because you'll probably have two landowners that are probably. I don't know how they feel about it, but I mean, giving up, giving up a couple of feet or three or four feet on the edge of a road is one thing. But putting a massive culvert in your backyard is another thing. You know, so that's my point. I mean, to get everybody on board to go forward, that's that's kind of how I see it. Anybody else sees it the way I do, I mean.
Well, with option one, they're actually trying to go with the natural flow.
Yes, that's the original plan.
You know, do you, is there any possibility that some of those properties that are north of that beginning of the S curve? That they'll still give a little bit of water or?
So we're we're designing the system for a ten year storm. If you get a storm that's more than a ten year storm.
Yes, yes.
It's it's gonna flood a lot like it does today. Our goal is to design through a ten year storm and not to exasperate anything above that or make it worse. You'll always have flooding. There, we're just trying not to make it worse.
Tom, can I go back real quick? Can we go back real quick for the comment that? That was mentioning regarding. He's getting visibility trade offs between the different options. And pointing out costs and another thing you mentioned was schedule. He talked us about our schedule for construction as it exists under the grant. I understand that we're, we, there is a period of time in which we have to expend those funds. And so if we run into significant delays looking for permits through um, Army Corps of Engineers or elsewhere. That the schedule risks become a very real. Potentially deadly to the project issue that we wouldn't be able to overcome.
So, uh, the current schedule is to complete design towards the end of this year. And go to construction, go to beta construction in the. The January, February, March. And then be in construction in late spring. We're looking at at least a year. A year and a half of construction. I don't remember exactly what's in there, but a year, year and a half. Uh, and then I believe we have to have all of the work done sometime in twenty twenty four.
That's what I recall as well. So if we're, if we're already looking at. We might only have a six to nine months worth of float in our current schedule as it exists. And so we're looking at a permitting process that could take twelve months or possibly more. That was the power project.
And I had another thing, say, some particular landowner, say, we're not gonna go, we're gonna take you to court or. Where, yeah, that could throw, that could throw a wrench in the whole project.
Yes, it can.
Okay.
So really just say like, because I know it could be like really long, but the top picture is out. The because that blows our budget. The number, number two is out because of the timeline, correct?
It's just risk. It's 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 a, it's a matter of of risk and what your risk tolerance is in this case. I think the likelihood is high or moderate to high. The impact is potentially very high. And so those two things combined, it's a, it's pretty high risk with a smaller award.
The top one is out.
Why you say the top one is out?
We have option one. We have what to do this.
It's it's like too much.
We don't have enough time to do the half of it.
The most important part of it is still still gonna gonna get done of option one.
Where are you, where are you?
Because he's saying like the original one, we can't do it anymore because of the amount. We are three point two.
Yeah, but he's not counting all the way to Quail Run.
We we have enough money to do everything here that was in the grant application.
That's what he said.
Can't do this in. And none of the.
None of that.
Proposals can conclude that.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, really, the the drainage from the uh, curved there to Quail Run is actually pretty good. I mean, it's it's a wider surface. It it's sort of crowns at the top and is. Well, you know. And there's less, less.
Reconstruct the road and put it in roadside.
So. So on this street and water line, you've got reclamation water line. There's three different options there. That's one point three, four, five million, one, two, four and one, one, five. What what do those options mean?
Good segue. Good segue. Thank you for answering that question. So we've we've pretty much covered the three options, advantages and disadvantages. Now I want to talk to you about the uh, optional improvements.
Real quick, Jessica from Luzar. Grant administrator, but Langford mentioned that construction has to be completed by January twenty twenty five. And without an extension, so he. Is eligible um, to ask for a two year extension if needed. So we could apply for an extension.
So we might have six months of play there. You want to find Mario's shoe real quick? Get it back to me. All right, we can so. So uh. What the city had asked for after our last meeting was some some kind of all cards type of menu, so to speak. That can be discussed here and hopefully uh, get get some, get some good feedback. So the first three items there are basically three different options on how to improve the roadway. From. Beginning at the end of the S curves down to Quail Run. All right, there's three different ways you can do that street. Uh, one is to continue the street at the same width as the street up here, which is twenty four feet. You will simply build as much road as you have money here. And replace the waterline at the same time. Now, you may be asking, why do we gotta replace the water? The waterlines are fairly shallow and they will not survive construction. And so for every foot of street we build here, we have to build a waterline as well. And that runs about, on the glasses, eight hundred and fifteen dollars per foot for the waterline and the street at twenty four feet wide. The second option is the same street, same waterline, but the street's only twenty two foot wide, so it's a little narrower. You could actually go down to twenty feet if you wanted to. I think that's kind of narrow, but. But just is it just options to show you that you can narrow down the road if you like? And then the uh, the third one is street reclamation. So that's just a construction technique where we would go out and basically grind up the existing street. The base in the asphalt, just grind it up. We would uh, put in a binder, probably something like a P two or asphalt emulsion. And we would recompact it. And then we would come in with a couple of inches of asphalt. You're basically recycling the existing materials that are there. And putting asphalt on top of it. There's about a ten or fifteen percent savings when you take that approach.
You you know, Mr. Tur, you don't ask this question. Would pass that curve with an overlay like we did on Lockhart Street be feasible? Why is that?
Street's in very poor condition. Uh, and it's not suitable for a road. Basically. Painting the surface with something very expensive on top of something that uh, is in poor condition. It's a, it's a bad, that's what's bad. It's just, it's just not the right thing to do on that street.
How, okay, so in one, two and three, the street with the twenty two foot with the curb is seven fifty. So why are the other options, the twenty two foot wide is one point two four million? How how come it's five hundred thousand dollars more? Uh, than the option of seven fifty? Say, oh, because this is the other part of the road. Yes, oh, I see. Well, where is, where is that money coming from if the total for option one is five point zero five?
So an option, if you chose option one, you would have a remaining budget of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So you can use that three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to select some of these optional improvements down here.
Basically, what what there's, what exists is there's different road construction techniques or widths that you can play with. Get different cost per linear foot. And then you get as much as you can get for that three hundred thousand. We don't know the exact cost until we get the bids or proposals back um, on what that was. And on top of that, there's other options that he's he has talked about, yeah. But that's why you see the different cost per.
Maybe I'm reading this wrong, but I don't see much money left at all to do option improvements.
But he's saying that you can, you can do, you can pave as much of that as you have left.
Which which wouldn't be a whole heck of a lot.
But you say, if I'm reading this right, he says remaining budget of three hundred and thirty thousand with option one. So is that, that's all remaining to do the optional improvements? We got three hundred and thirty thousand to play with?
Right. And so if you're, if you're going to um, try to do the whole thing. The rest of it, you're looking at over a million dollars.
We don't have it.
We don't have it. So you can get maybe a third at best of that stretch to Quail Run.
So for example, if you, if you, if you chose to extend Northwest River Road past the S curves. This is out, how far? Three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Not much.
But but you could do the bike pedestrian eight foot shared path at sixty dollars a foot for two seventy.
Yes. Yeah, and that's the entire length, correct?
Uh, yeah.
So yes, you could, you could build sidewalk or shared use path. A whole distance through the project.
That's what I I wanted.
There you go. That that doesn't seem like very much too. Is that the whole distance of the whole?
It's completely separate from the road.
You need more easement then for an eight eight foot pedestrian?
No.
No?
No, we have, we have room to do it.
Okay.
If we did it, it would be on this side. Of course, most of the drainage comes this way. On this side, uh, we have room to do it and we don't need much of a drainage pit, so it is possible.
Remember, like, on the original budget, there was two hundred and fifty thousand in easement money from basically the shoe trade to Lockhart Street. And it was another two hundred and fifty thousand in easement money for acquisition from basically the shoe trade all the way to Quail Run. If you're not doing any improvements on there, don't you have that money now to play with to do more improvements?
There's, uh, the only easement money we have. There's, uh, the only easement money we had for this part of the project was here. I think we had this couple, couple of parcels to do the, uh, Quail Run.
Look, if you're not doing that now, that money is now available, right?
It does free us some money.
That's what I was, that's, that's what I was saying.
It does free up a lot.
If I remember correctly, when I was referring to the mayor, about that was two fifty and two fifty.
It does.
So that would be something that would at least bring to your attention.
My hand, a little bit more.
Might have a little more.
And, and you could always, but the bid strategy we could use on something like this is we design out, you know, option one, have optional, um, items that the construction companies would bid on. We get pricing on those depending what the, the actual pricing goes back with. We can turn on or turn off those options. And so, um, by that point, we'll already have figured out what, what the easement costs are going to be and acquisition costs and what things we want to be. So we'll ha, we'll have a better idea of what those costs are. So you could be in a situation where you get an extra hundred feet of road and your, your sidewalk. That's what, or both these. That's something.
So let me, let me, uh, explain the, the last few items on the optional list. Uh, we had hoped to do some culvert improvements here at Quail Run. Uh, I think the value on that is about sixty thousand dollars. I actually think it's best to wait on this till this property here develops. And that it, it may be that the impact that they're having to help fund this construction. And then we were going to revise or to replace this culvert, uh, only because we were gonna redo the intersection. I don't know if that culvert is particularly problematic from a flooding perspective or from a condition perspective. It, it is what?
It is when it floods and then the water sits there for a long time.
Right there.
On Lockhart Street, right, right by the church.
For fifty thousand dollars, you might wanna, you might wanna.
What about the driveway of the schoolhouse? Is that still?
Driveway, they're, they're included in the price of the roadway.
The driveway for the schoolhouse?
There you go.
So, Mr. Turk.
Good sir.
I, I assume so. The, the most pressing part is to, to pick option one, two, or three. And after we do that, then we can work on the optional improvements later on.
Well, I'd, I'd like to get some direction this evening.
Okay, on all, on all of it, okay.
That's possible. Yes, ma'am, just be freely.
I'm sorry. Random question, going back, maybe I meant something. Has the council already decided and agreed on, um, the S curve and, uh, shoot tree area? Has that had been decided and we talked about, I, I remember we were talking about, um, speed limits and whether or not to keep that way it is or keep it perfect? And I saw everything. Has that been decided?
So let me talk about the curve. So, uh, uh, so the last time we were here, we showed you a couple of things. We showed you a, a basically a full stop corner, which is undesirable from a, from an engineering perspective. But I got the sense that in, in this removal, we really liked it. So, so we took it off the table, okay? Uh, and then, uh, there was a suggestion about a roundabout. We looked, we looked at a roundabout and unfortunately, it's not quite the right application for a roundabout. Uh, roundabouts are typically for odd numbered leg intersections. So if you had like five roads coming in at an intersection or seven, you know, that, that's typically what they're used for. Uh, but there was, the reason we took it off the table is because it required so much level. It was just, it was just impossible to justify. Uh, you would have to take right away from, uh, both this landowner and this landowner, possibly this landowner too. So, uh, we were, we were basically left with, what we wanna do anyway, is to, uh, put a nice long radius in there that's appropriate for the speed limit. And, uh, the speed limit doesn't have really any effect on the cost or design. It can be twenty, it can be twenty-five, it can be thirty, whatever you choose that speed limit to be.
But you're putting in a what, a long radius?
Long, longer radius curve.
Uh, okay.
Right now, it's kind of sharp. We'll have a longer radius, so it'll be a little smoother and easier to navigate.
So that has been decided with your counsel, the counsel has agreed on that?
Uh, I, I wouldn't say that. I, I will say that this is what we're recommending and there really aren't any alternatives.
City Hall.
Okay, and your question, Susan.
Put them in the building process and museum.
Yes.
Mardo artifacts.
Yes, sir.
The purpose of the grant was to solve the flooding.
Correct.
Okay, is option one solve the flooding?
Up to a ten-year storm, yes.
Ten years, okay, that's not much water.
Uh, that's quite a bit. A ten-year storm is, is, uh, it's not many years, so it's a, it's about half a hundred-year storm. It's, that's quite a bit of flooding. But as I said, you are in the hundred-year floodplain and this project's not gonna help that at all.
Okay, and also the S curve, uh, this general, whatever it is that you said, uh.
Long radius?
Yeah. But how much by the way you gonna count for that?
We, to, to get that curve in, we just need to get this fairly small piece. Unfortunately, that's where the shoe trees stump in.
I was saying, looks like we're not gonna have a shoe tree anymore.
Traffic was an issue too last time. Somebody brought that up, people speed around that corner. How's that being addressed?
Well, again, the longer radius, the increased side distance makes this safer. It's gonna be safer than what it is today.
I, from your engineer, but in my opinion, it, it actually, I think it's gonna be worse because we're going to incur, that river is gonna be so smooth and so nice.
It'll be a racetrack.
It's gonna be a racetrack. Those people are gonna be able to go faster.
Put speed bumps.
That's what I'm thinking about, that, the speed bumps.
What does it know?
We're talking about speed bumps or, um, what they, if there's just, I don't even know if it's like long, one can or one, five can?
Rumble strips?
Yes, is that?
So they do, they just vibrate as you go over them?
Is that only for faster, um?
No, rubble strips will work here.
Because I, when I look at it, I'm like, oh, man, that is a nice area to see how that.
I, I live on that curve and two to three o'clock in the morning, I have some people flying down there.
So when I, when I see that that's gonna be a nice.
Or it'd be a good racetrack.
I, I think there's a couple of things the city can do. Another suggestion that Dorothy had when we were talking a long time is like, uh, those little signs that, that tell you how fast you're going.
Variable speed signs, yes.
Yes, they are very effective. When I drive down San Jacinto and Lockhart, it makes me slow down every time.
And we can, we can have those solar powered and we can install those in the curves. Uh, the drawback to speed tables and rumble strips is noise. Every time a car goes over a speed table, you hear it. Every time it goes over a rumble strip, you hear it. Uh, there's a statistic out there, I think like sixty or seventy percent of all speed tables or, or, uh, speed homes that get installed, get removed in the first two years because of the noise. People just don't anticipate the noise. So I think the, the, the variable speed signs are a great idea and make a lot of sense.
What about a median, if not a roundabout median, that just makes it tighter fit that maybe there's, I don't know, reflective post in the middle?
The median, the purpose of the median would be to separate traffic, which would be a, a safety enhancement. Uh, but given the speeds that we're talking about, we're talking twenty, twenty-five, thirty miles an hour, generally not a problem.
Oh, aren't these issues that we just have to deal with after construction?
But then navigating, okay, would that help? I don't know, you, I'm an engineer, so.
Um, probably not that much. For not working.
Well, our purpose here is to let engineer know, I guess, which option we'd like to choose.
I mean, uh, straw poll, but we didn't make an action item, unfortunately.
That doesn't have to be.
A straw poll and just see what the city council would like to do.
Um, well, with the land owners currently here of option two and three, what feedback have you received? Or can we ask them for feedback now or did they want a reserved comment at this point?
I think it's a great idea to get some feedback.
Do you wanna give feed, feedback or, or wait or not? Tell, tell, tell us about these option two and three?
Uh, well, I prefer option one.
So do I.
And then you?
We're neighbors.
No, we don't. You, you can try to do that, but I'm gonna tell you right now, even if it wasn't my land, I'd tell you not to do it because you're gonna mess up the, the flow of the river and you're gonna mess up the guy's property across the river. And we had the, we had the range down there and we had the same problem with people diverting the water. The guy diverted the water and we lost a whole bunch of land.
So, Mr. McGovern, I assume you don't want option two?
Yeah.
Okay. You wanna do a straw poll?
Yeah. Along with option two, also, we, I cannot confirm because I still have not received my records from the city because of the, uh, improvements that happened when the sewer, uh, excuse me, the septic, the sewer system was in place. And that whole area is a, uh, it's a septic, um, there's a septic tank, there's a field. We have no idea what's under there.
They don't care. They wouldn't care, they just think it's a.
Well, that's not true. Uh, we would have to reestablish whatever system.
Oh, no, no, we, we were on the sewer down, but they just left it.
So, the McGovern's here, Mr. and Mrs. McGovern, I assume option one is your preferred option and you option one, okay.
And his, his as well.
His as well, both option one, okay.
Sonia, how, uh, which one would you vote for, which option?
One.
And mine?
Option one.
Sam?
Yeah, I say option one with the path, with the eight, eight-foot path, but, uh,
Well, just, just take.
And Lockhart Street drainage, but option one.
Option one. And Jane?
Uh, option one with the Lockhart Culvert and shared path.
Okay.
Those are like all card menu items also.
Lockhart, Culvert, and the path.
Oh, so we, do we wanna add, add to our straw poll on option improvements? Who else will ask that question too? At this point?
What would yours be? If, but.
I think I would go with Sonia on the bike pedestrian sidewalk.
Quail Run or, or Lockhart Culvert, any, any?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I'll for that, for the, for the Lockhart.
Um, I'll, I'll say do the Lockhart Culvert, wait on the Quail Run Culvert and do the, uh, eight-foot bike pedestrian shared path at sixty dollars a linear foot.
Okay. There we go.
Easy.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come and talk to us and.
Thank you, sir.
This is exciting. We got one more thing done.
There you go.
Yeah, plus we'll have to do, do an official, okay, and at the next meeting.
August fourth, we'll do this.
But just one thing on the shirt he's got. Frank, if I'm wrong with, uh, Jessica's on here somewhere, but, uh, to do the pedestrian improvement, we better go back and.
With the mic.
The grant, the grant.
Right, yes, to do, to do a shared use path, um, we, we're gonna have to get a mother of may eye from the.
Oh, really?
Powers that would be with GLO or, or BMA. And it's, it, it might have to be, it's gonna have to be a part of a, we're in a contract.
So I believe the GLO, uh, said that, uh, it's possible, doable, the process isn't quite clear yet on how to do that. So that, that'll be a little sort of, sort of.
Thanks.
And that doesn't work out at all, you can always pick that, pick some others.
Yeah, just lengthen the, the running program.
And now you know how the council feels, so, yeah. Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, it's good to see everybody this evening. Friday's pretty cool. Thank you for the direction. Now we can forward and hit the times.
Yes, so there's anything.
Sir's got something to do until the end of the year.
There you go.
Very good.
Keep you busy, man.
All right, y'all have a good.
Thanks, Mr. Turk.
You have your word.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on. Um, I just wanted to mention that next month, we're gonna go to Thursday night instead of Tuesday night. Um, we did include this votes from City Hall in the utility bills. Um, and so we were mentioning that in the utility bill for changing the meeting nights. August the fourth. Um, the next thing we put on here was that MOU. Um, we've been, we've met twice now with, uh, Caldwell County Emergency, uh, people, Hector Rangel and Hank Allen. Um, they've been trying to figure out, uh, if the sirens in Martindale are working in case of an emergency. They've never been tested and so we are working on that. They did test them when they first were installed. Um, they thought they had never been tested, so we're working on, um, on working, this is not gonna cost the city. This is a, a county thing. So at the end of our meeting yesterday, um, Hector Rangel was going to find out there the sirens because apparently they're not working. Our fire chief had come and talked to us also.
How, how, how do they know they're not working?
The, the radio frequency repeaters that transmit the signal from Lockhart Dispatch, somewhere between them pressing a, you know, in your mental mi, mind, big red button, you know, siren button. If they press the siren button right now, the sirens don't go off. The sirens themselves are probably okay, it's just the connection, connecting those signals. And so there are some options that the fire chief, um, mentioned that, that they might be able to do. But ideally, what we wanna do is have, have that connection tied back in with the dispatch. And so closely associated with. Here, if it's not working. If, if we might be able to get the sirens turned on manually, but it may.
That's not ideal.
That's not ideal. What we wanna do is have, have them put on, um, a routine maintenance schedule, testing schedule, along with Lockhart cities when they're in the Caldwell County who are testing their own sirens and emergency warning systems. Um, we wanna get ours tied in with that same process, so we're working through it.
Sounds good.
And so he had, Hector Rangel had asked that we write an MOU between the city and the county, naming him as the emergency management, uh, official. So we'll be doing that. No, Hector is employed by Caldwell County.
Oh, okay, okay.
How would, how would we notify the residents, like in a monthly newsletter, a letter saying, well, we're gonna turn it on on this date? Or would we put it on, uh, the city of Martindale Facebook page?
We, we would, every avenue that we know of, we put it out.
Newspaper.
Newspaper, uh, our website, mailers, we would do it weeks in advance with frequent reminders. Um, and then we're probably still miss some people and you have your neighbors asking, hey, did you hear that sound the other day? What was that? You let them know that.
Well, if this drought keeps up, I don't, I think people would realize that it's not because of a flood.
Well, and we were trying to work with, uh, Bill Hamilton, also with, uh, the EMS, so that we'd have all three entities working together in case of, uh, an emergency. Um, so the next, uh, couple of items are the ongoing concerns about, uh, phase one. Um, did you wanna talk about that a little bit? What was going on there?
Sure. Um, in the phase one park, which is sometimes referred to as Veterans Park, we found that the access to the river from nineteen seventy-nine was one main road, but eventually it became three separate roads because dirt, dirt roads. Because people were coming in and going out or either coming in and going out on either right or left of the main road. This created an uneven surface for people to drive on in terms of deep, uh, potholes. Uh, I would call it a pothole, but it was bigger than a pothole. It was like a crater. There, there were several craters there. We, uh, reached out to, uh, a local gravel person here that has a gravel pit, Mike Holmes. He generously agreed to pave the. person here that has a gravel pit, Mike Holmes, he generously agreed to pave the road from, um, nineteen seventy-nine to a gravel, what has he had, what he has created is a gravel parking lot that is a hundred and twenty feet wide, forty feet wide on one end, and about sixty feet wide on the other end. Uh, he's probably used about twenty truckloads of gravel. He has reached some complications in installing the gravel because the gravel from his pit is so wet, I mean, so dry, that it's hard to imagine compacting it. He did work on it this past weekend, he tried, tried to compact it, but we may talk with the volunteer fire depart- fire department to bring a water truck to maybe water it down. Uh, at this point, it's al- almost completed. He needs to put smaller bits of gravel on top of the gravel that's there where we are going to put the handicap accessible porta potty, which will move over to the parking lot and install two handicapped signs there. So, we will make that a fully accessible, uh, handicap porta potty with signage, and that's how, how he stands, and it, it looks, it looks great there.
Yeah, it looks really good. I drove through there today and it looks really good.
Just keep those kids of those four-wheel drive trucks out of there when it rains.
And then the last thing is to rescind the mayor's order.
Could, 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 could we go to two point four?
Well, I just, can I add something to two point three? Because like, there's like a bigger issue going on over there at Phase One than just the parking and adding gravel. And I think like adding gravel and making it more, uh, accessible to our visitors, where we can't even like control what our visitors are doing. And not anywhere in there did I hear like, there's gonna be a riparian zone, or we're gonna, you know, make sure that this type of grassland is, will not be affected, and we're gonna keep X amount of, like, the natural grasses that are growing there to increase the habitat, protect the habitat. Also, because like, that place right there, it's just like dirt, it's just like dirt, I mean, it's.
I think right now, this, what we were trying to do is just to, uh, do daily maintenance on the park, and we're gonna wait to hear from the Parks Board.
Uh-huh.
It, it, it was to improve accessibility, because when people are driving on that road, get, getting there, I mean, even if you're in a truck, you jump up and down two, two or three feet, but in, in order to put the porta potty there, which we first initiate, initially rented as a handicap accessible porta potty, in, in order to have the porta potty in an ADA compliant surface of compact gravel, we had to also provide a, uh, rigid or less flexible accessibility to this porta porta potty. So that was a whole part of the whole thing, but that's almost like just starting, because that is a very primitive park now. And it will remain a primitive park because all of it is in the floodway, so.
And see, and I guess I've never heard of an ADA compliant handicap porta potty to be accessible with a wheelchair through gravel or compacted.
To gravel.
So, I'm sorry to, to interrupt, but the, it is not designed to be ADA compliant. The city is not seeking out to make it ADA compliant. It is a primitive space, and what we're trying to do is prevent further erosion of the dirt paths, or be, multiple dirt paths that are created to try to, um, make it so that vehicles that were trying to access that point had it. Um, and hoping that, we're, we're trying to accommodate for those who may have disabilities by putting an, an ADA sized um, porta potty down there and make up, um, parking spaces, um, reserved for those individuals. But by no means is, is this a developed parking space that ADA compliance is, is a part of that effort.
And see, I just wanna make sure to, to place an emphasis on, like, all of the complaints that have been coming from that park as far as like noise, cans, you know, everything else that, I'm sure that the citizens who are complaining about that, that this, you know, I'm sure that they would wanna see signs, I know that they're coming. I just wanted to make sure that people who do have those concerns, that it's not falling on deaf ears and.
That's, just yesterday when I was leaving town, I saw that our police officers were down there, um, and they're patrol, enclosed patrol down there beating the people. But I know, I know that our police department's also getting involved.
I, I wanna make one point, uh, 'cause I was down there one time, about a year, we had some rain, there was a flooding event, and it's a floodway, and the flood comes up, the round, it's super saturated, I saw a bunch of idiots, kids, four-wheel drive trucks were running them up. That's why I've thought we need to have some way to block access by, by.
A full-size pit, and I bottomed out, trying to get down there, so.
But a lot of that was occurring because they're four-wheeling down there, you know, and I've seen them, I've seen them do it. That's why I'm thinking, I've always, I've talked to Mr. Clinton about this, and the advisory board needs to know about this, we need to have some way to put limestone butter sticks and put cables in nighttime or in flood events, blocked off from any kind of vehicle traffic, because they will rut it up.
Cause, yeah, the park closes at night.
Yeah, and plus, in a flood event, we don't want anybody driving down there, at least till it dries. Well, you're discussing the issue, so, uh, okay.
And as far as the, uh, garbage in the city parks, um, we need to hire someone that can remove the garbage from the garbage cans and bring it back here to the dumpster. Um, so we'll be putting, uh, putting that as a newsflash on our website. Uh, the person who was doing it no longer wishes to do that job, so. Did you wanna say anything else about the garbage?
I have seen the park usage for several months. It seemed to peak, uh, July fourth. Um, I've talked to many people that have, that have come to, to the park, actually even a family drove all the way from Houston to come to our river because they love the river. Majority of the people that are coming like extensions of, say, a, a family, then then, and then there's several other folks with the family and friends or whatever, so it's been bigger parties of people, um, a lot of garbage. I, I got actually four truckloads of garbage off, off those two parks on Saturday and Sunday. Um, so I know what it's like, I've sent pictures to both of the major parties here, and we have discussed about getting it on a regular maintenance schedule. But really, from what I've seen, everybody is putting the garbage beside the garbage cans. They may be overflowed, but I rarely see like bits of paper and cans all over the place. The only thing that I do see is about twelve or fifteen piles of charcoal briquettes that once they are extinguished, they are put on the ground, so we may have to have a supplemental container for those types of things, but that's, that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, um, rescinding the mayor's order regarding water and solid waste services ordered in April twenty-second and twenty twenty, and that original order is in your pocket. Um, where Mayor Davini, uh, made that order, and so we no longer need that, so I rescind.
Okay.
What, what does that mean now? Rescind the order regarding waste services or, or what?
Wait, so.
This was, this order was issued, um, during COVID, when the, there was a height of COVID, uh, the initial COVID outbreak, and it was in response to similar activities taken by the Texas Public Utility Commission, suspended processing, um, the liquid accounts and utility show-offs.
Oh, you wouldn't turn it off?
Right, and so, um, that, that order, to paraphrase it, gave me the ability to waive some of those processes within our city ordinances. Um, we've, we did so for nine months or so, and then, um, in the last, for last year, we have not been, um, we have been disconnecting people who haven't paid and processing, um, the liquid, pursuing the liquid accounts. So, we haven't been following this, the full authorities granted under that order, and it really is overcome by events at this point, so might as well just clean up some leftover paperwork.
Okay.
Okay, so we will now move on to the River Advisory Board. Adrian, we're gonna speak to that.
I believe Charlie Olds is, um, uh, here on Zoom, so let's see if you, yeah, he, he's unmuted now. Charlie, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So, the first item is, uh, installing the prohibition of disposable containers uh, in the river. And so, we did install a sign by the water company as you drive down to the low water bridge. And I see that you, there is now a sign in Phase One Park, and that is good. But I, part of the Water Committee had made a, a motion and passed a motion to purchase more and install more disposable container ban signs at the Parks and City property. Maybe in the front of Allen Bates, uh, maybe by Skull Road, it, really in, in the high traffic areas. So that's item number one. And you want me to go to item number two?
Yes.
So, item number two, the, uh, the River Committee uh, made a motion and passed a motion that we asked the city to perform spot checks for infractions of the disposable container ban in and along the river. And that's only inside the city limits. We're looking for, uh, minimum like a spot check on a Friday or Saturday or Sunday at Bates Park, at Phase One, Skull Crossing, but, you know, really depending on the activity in these areas, or whatever the high, maybe the high activity area is. But what we would like is a record of the number of spot checks performed. Uh, maybe the actions taken, not so much we wanna give citations, but we'd really like a record of what the contact was, and maybe what the person thought, and if there's any action taken. And those are.
Charlie, oh, Charlie, I've wanted, Sam Clinton, I just wanna a- a- ask you a que- question. How, how would you define spot check?
A, a, a contact to an individual. And, 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 and really, a spot check would go to one area, and probably one of the, the police officers, just walk around the area, that'd be a spot check, and then record what was observed. There may be action taken, but we're not looking for citations. We're looking for data on what people are doing. And really to inform the people using the river that disposable containers are not allowed, and there's other alternatives. So, that, that's kinda what we're asking for with the Martindale Police Officers.
And I might add, they have been doing that. In the police report, it cites fifty-seven spot checks.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, checking all. Park checks in the parks, and, so that's not necessarily broke down, but, uh, he has put it as an item in his report.
So, i- is there a way to give more of a detailed breakdown of the contacts? And something that we can look at the data and say that so many disposable containers were, uh, discussed, or, you know, so so many people were contacted because they used disposable containers, and, uh, they were informed that they're not allowed. That's what we'd like to see.
We can ask, we can ask if that could be included in his report.
And also because like at our parks, with the amount of trash that's coming out, I mean, Sam, are you noticing still a lot of cans?
Oh, yes.
And their beer cans?
Yes.
Okay, so then our parks have signs on them that say no alcohol, no beer.
Well, we don't have that in.
Yeah.
We, we, we don't.
We've got the sign, we're gonna get it posted.
We have the signs. They're, for, for those, this is an example of the sign that we wanna put in Phase One, but al- also the sign at Allen Bates Park, you can barely even read it. It nee- needs to be cleaned or replaced, and we also need to put one in the parking lot, not just by the.
It needs to be replaced.
Yes.
It's got the wrong coordinates on it.
Yeah.
There's a timeline for that to be replaced.
As soon as we can find somebody who can put it up.
Put it up?
Yeah, we gotta buy the post and dig the holes and.
Now, we're talking about signs in the park, and then you're talking about the disposable containers in the river.
Well, in the park also.
Down the river, they're not gonna find it out and go, you can find it.
Well, that's enough, disposables, that the, the disposable container ban signs in the parks, and so that's where, that's where ordinance is.
I believe there is one that you can see from the river behind water.
You see it from the park, yes.
Uh, we can't keep people from drinking in the river, because we don't have jurisdiction.
We do the C line, I mean, for just drinking the river, you're right.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Charlie, um, this is Sonia of Villalobos. Um, I just wanted to say that I will be at the meeting. Um, thank you, uh, for, um, you know, the River Advisory Board and the wonderful job that y'all always do and your commitment, um, you know, to, uh, the San Marcos River that runs through Martindale. And, um, you know, it's gonna be a great time to honor the stewards and our board at the, um, you know, at this River Appreciation Day, so we'll see you at the meeting.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to new business consent items, the municipal judge report, the police report, the financial report, and the code enforcement report are all included in your packet.
So, for this, um, this is on the second time, and we tend to do follow similar procedures going forward. Looking for his approval unless the city council is accepting, uh, those reports and getting questions. We can answer them at this time.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, accept the consent items.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Well, I would like to discuss the, are we gonna discuss the police report, or have we just looked at it and then that's it, or we, can we ask the chief question?
If you have a question, yes.
Hello, Tommy.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so you've seen the sign that we wanna install in Phase One.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Um, I have hesitated to want to put it up. I a- actually didn't wanna do it last weekend because that was the hottest weekend of, of the year. And then I wanted to speak to you about it because I really wanted to know how much time you think it would take for you and your officers to enforce this, and do you want to spend a majority of your time, apparently you would have to. Do you wanna, when do you wanna start spending your time or your officer's time to enforce this in Phase One? Because you're, you're gonna have to enforce the alcohol ban, you're gonna have to enforce the disposable container ban, and it's, it's a fair, a fair amount of work, and also this weekend is gonna be like one oh six or something, so uh, give me a little feeling on how you feel about when you think you can work this into your schedule, and how do you think it'll work?
To be honest with you?
To be honest with you, I will go down there and force it like we did. As I said in my activity reports, we went down there and we checked the city parks fifty-seven times last month. Fifty-seven times. We gave a bunch of verbal warnings, hey, do this, can't have this, this is what we're gonna do. And and that's that fifty-seven times physically going there. And and that's really honestly making sure the computer's on and and I logging out of that. So it's probably more than that. But we'll go with what this is regarding the computer, fifty-seven checks. The other part of that is is it'd be just like catching traffic at traffic violators on the road. Traffic violators here in the city, traffic violators anywhere. When we go down there and we see it along, we'll we'll enforce it. But we're not gonna spend our whole day there enforcing what's on that. We just can't.
Well, I I think from what I've heard, you have responded to the loud noise. There's been some concerns about that from persons living close by. Um, I'm more concerned about the grills and and all all that stuff. I mean, I that and the noise and the alcohol and the disposable can. It's it it's a lot.
Well, once we go down there and we see someone, we'll tell, we'll warn them, hey, you gotta take this stuff out of here. You can't have this. This is what we've been doing. You can't have this stuck in the river. It's really worked. I mean, you go down there, people's got the non-disposable containers, people have been. There's been a few this past week. There was not many. I s- I saw the stuff that was being posted. I was down there. It was not loud at all. I just left there before they posted that. I told some people that were making a lot of complaints, download a decimal meter on your phone. Download a decimal meter on your phone. It's an app. You can get it. It works perfect. Anything above eighty eighty-five decimals, send me a text message, send it to me and I will go enforce it. We haven't had one yet since I said started saying that to those folks. Now, they're still complaining about the noise, but it hadn't gone over the legal limit of eighty-five until we do something here that says we don't have no can't hear nothing, whatever you wanna say, whatever distance, you can't hear beyond that distance. Uh, then we don't go to state law, which is eighty-five decimals. And we haven't had one person send me anything over eighty-five decimals. I've got a decimal meter. I haven't found it to be over eighty-five decimals in the park, not one time.
Uh, can who would then enforce those uh canopy contain canopy things that are in the river? Because I see that and it's like people have made their river, made the river their living room. Basically, there's card tables, chairs, and they and they take over the river, which impedes the flow. It impedes it impedes kayaks, you know, or whatever they or whatever they have to, who who would enforce that? The state or you?
No, no, we can, I can enforce that, but they have to be really impeding the the characters go down the middle. I haven't seen one of those in the middle.
We could just do no canopies at the park.
In the river.
We don't know that we can do that.
But I I I thought that was regulated by the state, that the state, we don't actually own the river and the ci- city limits.
But blocking a passageway is a state law. So I mean, you can't block a passageway. That that river's a passageway. It's just be it water.
Do you ever wear the game ones?
I do wear them.
I guess that would be kind of they could help you on that.
But they're not, but none of those I've seen are blocking the passageway. There's people going to, you'd have people, you have more swimmers or more kids in the middle of the river blocking a passageway more so than you do the tents.
I've seen a lot of tents there down at at Phase One. I saw three of them there.
Yeah, on the edges, right on that edge, on that curve is where they usually put in that.
Okay.
I mean, so it's be difficult to enforce that. You know, hey, you can't have a tent here. You gotta take it out. So I mean, we can, we can enforce all the laws you want and just say, hey.
It just becomes a game of cat and mouse because as soon as they see the police coming up, they turn it down. They hide their beer. They do, you know, whatever they need to do, you know, if they see an officer coming. And then once you do say something, then it could get escalated, which I'm sure that sometimes, you know, those conversations have gone to a different level or, you know, so it's just, it's just a cat versus mouse game.
And if you see, there's been a couple, we wrote, we did write some citations for disposable containers in the river. And that's what I've heard. And this is what's gonna happen.
But I think, you know, that's why it's important, like educating and, you know, whatever we have left over, we'll definitely give our police department the bottles and educating and then supplying these and giving them to people who might not be following the ordinance. But um, I think education and promotion of the river and I mean, would you throw trash on your mother? No, this is our mother earth. You know, who wants to litter on their mother? That's gross.
And what Mr. Clinton said earlier is exactly true. I see people trying to do their best with trash bags and everything. They just have no place to put it. I don't know if we have a giant dumpster down there that they, I guarantee you they'd probably all make it in a dumpster. Uh, I mean, I'm not advocating for that, but
I mean, or like we, what we do as people, we leave no trace. We take our trash with us. That's what, you know, we do. We we leave no trace. That could also be something that, you know, people adhere to or learn, you know, take your trash with you, take it out.
That that would be great.
Would would it be also beneficial to you guys if we put like uh Sonia said, put say no canopy is allowed, just put it on our rules, no canopy is allowed?
I mean, really, what we're saying is walk in there with a actually, I don't know what kind of water, a thermos of water and sit there with, because then they're gonna put chairs, you know, where do you draw the line? That that's just my thought. Are you gonna draw the line at canopies? You're gonna draw the line at chairs? Where? So if we're gonna say you can't have nothing in here except walking your body, that's pretty much what we're almost getting at.
I I mostly am against the canopies in the water itself. I I don't mind them on on the land. It's it's providing shade. Uh, they're there, but
You just have no jurisdiction.
Well.
I think we might be getting beyond
Yeah, we're gonna be No, no, I I well, I I just want to know if he feels com- comfortable with putting the signs up and then we'll just talk, talk about it ourselves.
With doing this and enforcing it the way
It'll help you.
The way we've been enforcing it, go down there, warn, 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 please get it out, get it out. And you're and you're right. You know, this, it is a cat and mouse game, but everybody has been, ultimately respectful. I've had none, one person not going with the argument. One person.
Uh, in your opinion, I mean, I know you can't get factual. Do you think most of the people using our parks on the weekends, are they out of town or are they living in our city?
No, I I think Mr. Clinton hit the nail on the head. I think people are extended family. They may be from out of town, but they're from extended family. They know about their place. They come, there are a lot of different people that are here. Um, people from you know, it does make it awkward. You've got one law in San Marcos which brought up or that says, hey, you can drink in the water, but can't drink on the shore. And here we can drink on the shore, but you can't drink in the water.
You can't drink on the shore.
Right now, well, after this sign is posted, but right now, I mean, it's there's nothing that says, there's nothing that notifies anymore. I'm the only one notifying people that you can't drink.
Yeah, we'll get those signs posted.
Okay, I'll help you out, sir. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll keep enforcing, keep doing what we're doing and make everybody safe and have fun.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries. Um, and now we will move on to um, the dark sky ordinance and Jerry.
All right, so tonight about I don't think it's my intent um to present an ordinance for approval this evening. Um, unless it's absolutely perfect in every way and then if you continue to go for it. Um, but it this is in draft form and I'll get it up on the screen here. Second of all. So um, this ignored the word has a reference to two thousand twelve. The the end result, the end goal is to have an ordinance that is focused on environmental protections in a number of areas. Tonight we're discussing the dark sky portion of of that order ordinance. Um, the other items that will be presented to the city council in the future, including include conserving trees and natural landscapes. As we learned, as the city learned, there is a TCEQ permit process for large construction areas, especially nearby to water. We want to make sure we incorporate those permit requirements into our court ordinances up to right city staff when those sort of issues come up as a permitting requirement and then also preserving legacy trees and um, we're looking at modeling those.
This is several words.
There'll be, there'll be several sections in the human that we did ordinance that will combine, will make up either a title or a chapter of our court ordinances related to environmental protections of of women. Tonight
Dark skies part of it.
The dark skies part of it.
I
You'll see references in the recitals of the whereas is um to Texas Water Code and such. Those will be in reference to those other yet to be presented uh ordinance regulations. So for tonight, we're we're focused on just the dark sky. So I want to get feedback and comments on particular issues and items, I think would be of interest as we create this policy. This this ordinance draft that you see here is modeled largely off of the Blanco regulations. We also incorporated some aspects of the Wimberly um ordinances and regulations regarding the dark dark sky as well. The the two main features I I want to focus on, we can get into the other depending on how quickly this conversation goes, are the mandatory date of performance of commen- mandating that every building property owner must comply with this dark sky ordinance. Blanco, as an example, get had a ten-year runway for for people to get compliance. This current draft version, it's just a a starting point. I placed it at two years. The thought on that was ten years is enough time for people to forget about it. Two years is close enough time. It's still people's memory. Um, and but it's still a lengthy amount of time for people to start making the planning accommodations for.
And you're in charge of making sure that you
So the this ordinance puts that on the building official um for the enforcement of of the dark sky.
Sounds good.
So I quick feedback on on that item. If we're, the the restrictions are laid out in the different types of lighting things, but in general, it's preventing the amount of illumination on anyone, anyone property covering the the light source, the the light bulb in most cases from direct line of sight, prevent glare and other things. And um, in every, almost every case, lights being shielded to not light not to escape above the horizontal plane of the light fixture. So and that that includes just about any form of lighting that you could you could think of. Including, you know, wall sconces on the outside of your exterior home. So with that in mind, do we, how how do you, how does city council feel about mandating a compliance line the same and two years out from the date we we pass it?
I kinda like it. I like your, I like your point too. You're just pretty fresh. And with the development of the area coming, it's sooner, it's sooner than, it's better sooner than later. And you know, when you got new construction, people can already install those type of fixtures in there during that construction phase.
I can pull the the specific reference um is gonna be section of one five seven oh one, which is gonna be on page, it's next page.
Quick question on that. Uh, is that two years for
Page thirty-six.
And new construction or is that uh two years for?
This would, this would be everybody.
Why don't you make it brand new construction stuff, let's comply with this right away and then two years for the other stuff that's already in place in the city.
So Blanco took a took an an approach for, you know, drawing the line between new construction and then continued non-conforming use. Theirs was somewhat complicated. I generalize it as being ten years of runway. What they did was say you have ten years from the date that you purchased that fixture of if it was greater than a certain value that that light fixtures depreciated value would run out. And as soon as that depreciated value had run out, then um you were, you had to replace it. And so um it's different than say our zoning ordinances, which allows for continued non-conforming use up to a point where the structure is destroyed or remodeled by a degree of over fifty percent or this is different than where we would mandate compliance full stop at two years. We could look at doing a more elegant or really more complicated runway if you wanted to, following the like the model.
This is way too complicated than it is, in my opinion.
Well, it uses a lot of technical terms like lumens and foot candles and things and those
Three pages, just a definition.
It it's it's a highly technical field that we're trying to regulate. Which is a segue to the 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 next uh item for discussion, we'll talk about later, but um, but Wimberly took a foot candle measurement approach. This takes a lumen measurement approach, two different ways to measure light. Typically, when we buy a light bulb, it'll tell you what its needs are. It's not gonna exactly tell you it's foot candles. Probably heard of lumens, probably haven't heard of foot candles. Basically, the difference is how much light is coming out of the bulb versus how much light is being shown at a point in space.
Do you get Kelvin reading?
We did. We do have Kelvin color ratings in in here as well. Um, which which refer to how yellow or red or how blue or cool the light looks. And based on those different features of light, we'll have different effects on glare and disturbances to the nightlife, wildlife and the natural night sky.
You know, bottom line for me, I moved here in nineteen seventy-nine. I'm I'm telling my age here. When I first moved here, you could see the Milky Way. It's gone. I went to, I went to Fort Davis a month ago. It was absolutely stunning beautiful. If we can, I think the sooner the better for for, it might impose a little aggravation for the locals, but I'm agreeing with Sonia here, the sooner the better. We could be, they could start ahead before the major development.
And I I like the ordinance. I like the way it's, um, you know, the way you have everything like specifically listed in there because uh it's it's just very clear. I like, I like Blanco's ordinance.
It looks good to me.
All right, um, any other discussion, guys? I mean, we're not voting on it tonight, but if the food, your feedback on on this issue of when it's it's gonna be required to perform.
I like the new construction to go ahead and start and then uh the our, you know, citizens for them to have the two-year grace.
Once we pass the ordinance.
Yes.
So so you mentioned the building ordinance code enforcer employee for the city would be the one that would make things happen in compliance. But it would seem like he would have to initially almost have to go around at night with a foot candle measurer to to see which lights are not in compliance.
So that we we can segue there. That's the next item for discussion. I'm gonna lose that thought.
Okay, yeah, it's fine. Okay, thank you.
But do you have any comment on data performances?
Two, two years seems fine, fine to me. I think ten, ten years is too long and I like the the wording and the definitions. You pretty much just gotta read it and anyone that is in a certified electrician or not, I mean, would know what all this means.
Two years is fine, but what are you gonna make the notice? The city's gonna take care of all street lights?
Yeah, so let's let's get, well, street lights are in here and how that's handled is is detailed out, but if you don't mind, can I, I go to the question you asked earlier, the one that Sam also brought up. How are we gonna enforce compliance on this stuff? Um, seeing that it's a, it's a highly technical field and would require special equipment and also training to to evaluate these things. But the example that Blanco sent for what you can call a rebuttable presumption where you essentially way rebuttable presumption to work, I'll let the lawyer jump here in a minute to fix whatever I screw up. But if if we notice that a gas station is lit up brighter than the sun, the the city code enforcer could could go out there and make a reasonable judgment based off the visual observation of that property that they are, they are in violation. And then they can be cited for violation of this ordinance. Now, they would have the ability, the property owner under to rebut that presumption that was rebut that presumption that was made that they in violation by showing proof through a certified person, technician, that would take measurements or other things to, to say, in fact, while it may look like I'm brighter than the sun, I am still in compliance with your ordinance. It, it eases the enforcement burden on, on the city. And it really helps us in a lot of ways focus on the obvious mal actors who would not be compliant with this. Other things such as like, is your lampshade covering the, the source of the, you know, the light bulb? Those are pretty easy to see visually, but when it comes to how many lumens per acre is this property owner putting out there, that would require some, some special training. And we do give guidance in the ordinance in there where we set limits on the number of lumens per acre. And so if somebody is, say, building their outdoor lighting from scratch and they know they screw in, you know, 20 thousand, 1,000 lumen light bulbs at their properties, we're going to show 20,000 lumens. So that's one of the reasons why we use a lumen calculation instead of a foot candles, because when you're purchasing, you see, you have a better idea controlling that light source. So and I think the limits we have on there are pretty high. And there's, I think they're reasonable. And if it's, it's then shows successful in other places. My other line of work, I've recently got to a rebuttable presumption on other issues. So it's, it's, it's a process that exists. I don't know if, can you want to weigh in on rebuttable presumption?
He's already getting, he's already learning.
So that, so to your point then, Sam, we wouldn't have our code enforcer officer out there with a special tool holding up, holding it up to a light source, trying to figure out is that light? We could use some common sense to say, well, that's way brighter than anything we have.
We also, I mean, the other thing is if something persists, you could require you could check the source of the light. You could unscrew the light bulb for evidentiary purposes, take a picture of the type of light bulb to show the limited Kelvin rating. And then that could be used as evidence. I mean, there, there's any number of ways that this could be addressed. Rebuttal presumption being one of them. So, but I mean, ultimately, the code enforcement officer with code ordinances does have the power and authority to enter property. And if someone for a period of time makes calls to the city and says, my, my approach is light pollution. When, believe it has time, he can make his way out there and contact with the owner and take a look and take a look. And if in fact the revolver is violating, then we fixed.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I know in my line of work, we had pictorial standards we use like for blast grade or what. I mean, I've seen photographs on the internet. You could have a pictorial standard of a gas station. He'd have his pictorial standard and he goes to that, our gas station, hey, this photograph looks different than this. Because there is some dramatic differences. If you, if you go on the internet, you'll see one that's night sky friendly versus not. It's pretty dramatic. So pictorial standard, would that be, could use, could that be used legally or pictorial?
It could be some evidence.
As comparable or some sort? Okay.
Yeah. And then I think I might here, but in, in the rest of the, the ordinance language, other than what would be included in the chapter and verse of the dark sky would direct the either city administrators or building official, one of the two, city staff more generally have published guidance and pamphlets for members of the public better on understand. Showing what a light that wouldn't conform will look like, what a light would, in performance would look like. And so kind of like you, what you're saying, Mike.
And I know, Mike, that whenever we've called Bluebonnet, the light fix, the lights that they have on their street poles, as far as the Kelvins that they have are a dark sky compliant. So some of their stuff that they've had more recently, like they're, they're already gearing towards that anyway.
But you know, I did talk to alignment about that. He said, there are several ways you can do that. You can also lower the light fixture itself and, and angle it down towards the ground. There's other ways of doing it too.
Well, in, in our specific street license has been brought up a couple of times. That's on, if you're looking at your blue reference numbers in your handout on page forty-three, section 15704C, street lights. Not only do we set the color temperature to not exceed 3,000 Kelvins, but we also dictate the design that the fixture should be cut off fixture, basically meaning that no light extends beyond the horizontal plane of that fixture. So a little bit of both of them. We catch both aspects of that.
There is one thing, string, string lights or rope lights, the, like say the Christmas lights that are all out here on the buildings. It says illumination or decoration is discouraged but not prohibited. So I guess I feel, feel fine with that. I don't really like Christmas lights up all year round, but sometimes they start to look a little tacky if they've been up too long, but at least here it says it's discouraged but not prohibited.
Yeah. And, and but they still, one of the, the next sentences on that is they cannot create excessive glare from motorists, bicyclists, pedestrians, neighbors. If they're, if they're excessive or do create glare or other safety hazards.
If it's like National Lampoon Christmas, you know, whenever he goes and but I mean, like weird, weird, you know, there's not a whole bunch here in town. But I was going to say, Sam, we know who's going to be dressing up as a Grinch.
That in my neighborhood.
He's a detailed guy, man. You know, Sam.
You might have neighbors who have those big stroke tight lights, a little, you know, Edison light bulb, a student looking lighting set open at your backyard or whatever. We do have within that same section requirements that those bulbs don't, aren't brighter than 125 lumens. And that they are of a warm Kelvin temperature. So, and that they can't be located too closely reflective features and aren't, aren't visible from too far away from where they're at. So even those lights, they're, they're allowed, but try not to have them create a distraction to the night sky.
So did you want this voted on next meeting or in the second meeting and all of that?
This, I intend to bring up, I nearly have the some of the conserving trees and natural landscapes portion also finished or ready for this evening. We can bring this up for vote at the next meeting if you want, or we can wait for the rest.
Is the verbiage, is the verbiage in there for the two, two years?
Yes, it's currently.
So everything that we discussed, it's, it's ready to go.
Yeah, everything we discussed is, is, is ready to go, so.
So I'm going to make a motion to pass our dark sky ordinance. I thought we were going to wait. Do you want to wait? Do you want to pass it the way it is?
You can pass it the way it is. I don't know if the, the, it's, would be approved as to form in, in the actual ordinance language. We do have some preliminary recitals, but as, when it comes to publication effective date and some of the other items that would go along with the ordinance being.
But what if I was going to say table? Oh, until our next meeting. Sorry.
You're going to say something?
That we approve the table.
Yeah.
Street lights, if they're anywhere, can change the temperature to like, say, 2700 Kelvin, make it a more warmer lights, more red shifted blues or do all sorts of damage to your circadian rhythm, all your bright, bright lights. And what you're doing here is a great thing. Let's just keep on shifting it a little bit more to the red spectrum. Your eyes are more not adept at that, at those colors. You're not going to have all these just intents going from dark to light, dark to lighter. But your eyes will be more adept and stay more adept. More red shifted colors. And I believe we can shift the 3,000 Kelvin to down to like maybe 2700 Kelvin. At least starting out for all the street lights, that would greatly help. Looking at us.
Yeah.
Good point. Thank you. 2700 instead of 3,000.
So then my motion was to table the item until our next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that carries. None opposed.
Hey, we're, we're betting a thousand on that.
Yeah. So now we're going to move to number six. We have two ordinances, the river board and the parks board. And I believe both those ordinances are in your packets and it's now open for discussion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll provide some context. So the the city, city of Markville has a number of advisory boards decommissioned for current planning zoning, made up of the city council members at present. The river advisory board, the parks advisory board is restored preservation commission. The thought here is, as we heard in the discussion earlier tonight about things such as can bans, use of the river and use of the parks have a lot of overlap. And so there's some jurisdictional overlap in terms of that, that advice of the city possibly sought out in passing. The other thing that, that I've noticed for, for quite some time is the parks advisory board has had a highly fluctuating membership. It's inconsistent, difficult in maintaining sustained chairs and positions and even attendance at meetings and establishing forums.
Since I left.
You're so good.
Since I was the chairman. I think I had done pretty well as the chairperson.
And then we've also seen that the river advisory board highly engaged. I'm not saying the, the parks advisory board isn't highly engaged. The, the people who volunteered to be on that board care deeply about the parks. And nothing, what I'm saying is, is anywhere to discourage them or be authoritative towards them or anything. But I think there could be a lot of benefit in combining those two boards, strengthen the, the membership pool, if you will, and better address some of the overlapping issues that both of them have jurisdictionally. So in terms of the rivers and the parks, most river access in the cities, public access is through parkland other than the areas where they don't overlap, obviously, is the river advisory board has taken on a leading role in advising the city council on things such as water quality and permits for, which are treatment plant discharges and things that the parks board hasn't, would it get involved in? But those are, I think, issues that could still be addressed by the government. And so I think the city may benefit from enhancing its, its volunteer pool to get more consistent participation and membership buy-in in those areas. So.
Can I, I'll go ahead and open up. So the river advisory board was my baby. I'm the one that brought it to council. I'm the one that assisted with helping it. I think the people that are on there because they are so engaged and so cohesive as working as a team is because of the love and the focus on the river. When you fill out the applications, whenever the applications are done, you'll see their background and what they want to do. Did anybody ask anybody on the river board if they wanted to, to do that? Did, did anybody ask any one of them to say, you know, do you want to also discuss about parks and ADA compliance and swing sets when their expertise is in the river? I understand that there's overlapping, some things do, but I don't see why there cannot be like, uh, you know, meetings, if anything like that did come up where they could work together. I just think that it's a volunteer position. It's not a voluntold position. I think if we do this, that we will lose some members that are on the river advisory board because they're not going to want to spend, you know, their time into something that they really didn't sign up for. You know, with their focus being on the river and the river quality and, you know, the discharge and, you know, things that they're doing, writing letters to the legislature, doing stuff like that. They work together because of their passion for the river. I feel like if, if we had something here that was presented to me as a council member that said, I have spoke to the river advisory board, they are okay with, with doing this. And they're okay with, you know, you have, you know, somebody that's in charge of the parks board. You have somebody that's in charge of the river advisory board. I just think that it's a volunteer position. If they signed up to volunteer for the river advisory board, then that's a capacity that they should serve in.
Ask the question.
Huh?
Ask the question.
Oh, yeah. Do, would, would you want to be on the parks board also?
Could just be a single board. Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
We have some people on the river board that aren't, you know, they are not in this, they don't live in the city limits. I don't think they want to be, be, be discussing those things necessarily.
So at, at the meetings where you're at, y'all, what you discuss is solely the river.
No one misses a meeting. I was at Tom's last one, the first one, I mean, everyone shows up as a very engaged group. You're joined, left just like beyond the meeting is still, it's overwhelming to some extent. I don't want to put more work on it. And that might, my only concern is that you're going to, what you're alluding to is you're putting other activities, other work already on that board, on that group. The meeting lasts right now about 15 minutes. I'm not, you know.
Bring it up and let us not miss.
Yeah, I mean, we could bring it up. We have a meeting on Thursday.
I'll make a point. I'll make a point. Sam Marcus has just one advisory board. They have a parks and it's all river and park. I mean, I mean, it would. It, it, it makes sense.
There's a lot of overlap.
If we need to volunteer for the parks.
How many people are on the parks?
What I'm saying is, if you do.
What was your question?
Is there, is it, is all the positions filled, you know, parks?
See, that's, that's, that's Jerry's point.
Well, in their, in their, a couple of people don't come. But I mean, we see like how long the discussions are being because you're dealing with, you're, you know, you're dealing with infrastructure of the parks. You're dealing with, you know, paying parking spaces. There's like so much that entails, you know, in the park. I just feel like if you're going to be on the parks board, there needs to be just like the, the volunteers for the river advisory board were filtered because of their jobs on there. It says, what is your background? What is your knowledge? What do you know about this? Whenever I, you know, envision a board, that's how, you know, they were selected. Whenever I see like a, a parks board, I envision like, you know, I think Ms. Devini has her degree in biology. You know, there should be somebody on there, you know, that had the parks background, somebody that has a, a background like in the plants and the natural habitat, you know, something with the swings or, you know, something like that. So it's that, that's how boards were formed is because of the background and what you can apply to that board.
I think what we're witnessing though is a very small volunteer pool from which to gather that input and advice. I think there might be bit limited human resources, limited volunteer capacity within the city. And having, I think, if we pick all the boards, other than the planning zoning, combine them, we, there's seventeen. seventeen people, twenty, you know, seventeen people on those boards. That's quite a
I just think if we do that, we're gonna lose people. We're gonna lose, we're gonna lose people.
I noticed in the parks report that they were reporting asking the police to go into the parks and do checks in the parks. So they do overlap. Councilmember McClabb, you started to say something.
Oh, well.
Is this gonna power down in thirteen seconds? Does that mean anything?
And I don't know if Charlie or anybody else is still on there.
Well, just a minute, I'm recognizing councilmember McClabb.
I'm just gonna go with what Jared says. I mean, we got a limited resource. I mean, the parks and the river is all grouped together because people go to the parks, go to the river. And I'm just saying, we got, we got a talent pool and if people want to come, I mean, we could call it the River Park Advisory Board. We could leave both, both names in it. We don't have to call it the River Advisory. We call it the Parks River Advisory.
Environmental.
Environmental or whatever you want to change it to encompass all aspects of our parks. Because basically like Jared said, everybody goes to our parks to go to the river. So they're all interlaced there.
Really the, so it might be useful to reference what their, their, their charge is for the, I have it in the I missed the PDF. But the river committee is preparing rules and procedures that carry out their own business. Making recommendations to staff and consultants regarding river advisory issues. Produce written minutes, but where they're providing input for city council is increasing public awareness on issues relating to the San Marcos River. Putting on public education programs, making recommendations to city government concerning the river and submitting an report. On the park side, it's similarly structured, but in some ways is, they do a little more because they have a function as it relates to providing advice on the expenditure funds. For five, nine, three.
Ninety-three eleven.
Parks Advisory Board acts advisory capacity on rules and regulations relating to city parks, regulation facilities and activities. And providing oversight of city parks with the consent of owners or persons in charge of those properties. And recommending activities. So if the, the primary function of our parks in terms of the people who patron our parks is nearly exclusive to river access. There are, there is a sizable contingent of folks who use the parks for the playground equipment and the green space. But the majority, they use our parks as a river access point. And from that standpoint, if we're looking at proposing rules such as we place can ban signs in the park.
Yeah.
Well, is that a park thing, river thing? And, you know, there's I think there's some efficient, I know that the membership, their interests are different. I think in the past, there's been a perception, rightly or wrongly, that if you're a member of the Parks Advisory Board, then you have to be a volunteer. Nowhere in ordinance, as I say, that's the case. It just happened to be what members of that park did, kind of like members of the river committee go oftentimes volunteering river plan. But it's not part of their charge. In this, in this case, if, if, if we're looking at advising on park rules and park policies, they also have a direct reflection on river rules and river policies.
But it's, I mean, it's so much more than that. The parks is so much more than that. I mean, we just heard Ms. Devini say that there wasn't minutes for I don't know how many years.
That's why you think.
That's part of the problem.
Can I, can I add one point? What about grant riding? If trying to get grants for the parks, trying to get grants for the river, I mean, if they got this talent pool, you know, Mrs. Devini can, she's, she has expertise. She can, she can work with Virginia Parker who's, who has knows about grant riding. They can interface with each other. And if we get these people. Can I please finish? Please? So if you have Virginia, say Carol talking, and you have these people working together as a group, we can combine that and possibly get grants that can involve the park and involve the river at the same time. It would benefit both the park and the river.
Can we just respectfully ask the members from the park and the river committee before we pass any, anything?
No, I don't think we're looking to, there's no ordinance that's been proposed. This was, this is
So yeah, I would say just, just let them talk about it at their meetings. And then, yeah, if everybody's good with it, then yeah, but.
To some degree, those boards and commissions function as a service to the city council. And so if the city council is getting the value out of those boards and commissions that you expect, that's fine. If they agree, you don't agree. My point is ultimately it's your, y'all's decision.
I know, but ultimately I respect volunteers and I respect their time. And, you know, I also respect their input. So I feel that it's very valid to also let them have a part in the process as far as being a part of this community, that their voice be heard. And I would rather at least allow that respect just that they've had for us and our community and our river and their time, just to like have, would you want to or would you not? Because potentially, you know, if there's people that are not wanting to, we could lose, we could lose members.
Do you, do you have any idea? I know there's five on the Parks Advisory Committee, I think five on the river, seven. So you have any thoughts about combining the five and the seven? You would have twelve, would you have less or?
The city council at that time would nominate and choose who serves in those processes.
Of the current members?
Yeah, and what the size of that board would be determined by the city council. I think much more than seven gets a little probably difficult to manage. Probably want at least five. So, but I mean, if you want it to be nine or you want to keep the membership the same.
I mean, you could combine them both, have twelve, and if somebody drops out, you could reduce it or whatever. I mean, it could, to make it a transition point, put them all together at this point and then as time goes on, we could modify. Well, I mean, that, that way, everybody, no, but not doing that way, you're not excluding anybody. You're, I think you're combining your resources. So if you have, you know, these people want to come in, all of them, put them both on the environmental board, you know? And then that way, if we have people that do drop out, we have the personnel to cover it.
And you could have friends of the board. The parks board already has that. We have friends aboard who can attend all of the meetings.
Yeah, we don't want to exclude anybody.
Not everybody has to be on the board.
And we don't want to call it the river. They could call it something else. So just combine the two boards or both, they're all, they're just combining the two boards together. And everybody that's on the boards, they all come together. There's twelve of them, there's twelve of them.
I just want to make another point that the river is the lifeblood. The water is
I agree.
Not the park.
I agree.
Not the park.
Totally agree.
The water is.
I agree.
So whenever it comes to having a focus on the water and the waters that we had and that we've had since, you know, whenever they're, they're coming out, I mean, that, that's a focus. So, I mean, you know, the parks and everything is everything, but I mean, the water, if people are passionate about that and want to have that as a sole focus and not have everything else going on, then you know, there's some people that do.
Yeah, but you would have the talent pool from both parties together and they could discuss that in their, in their.
But when you're saying not to call it a river advisory
Okay, call it River Parks Advisory Board or whatever, whatever's suitable. I mean, I, I mean, I'm just saying, what Sam Marcus does, they have one advisory board. I mean, I think if we could get these people together, that way, if we do start losing people or whatever, we, we got, we got them filled. And like I say, I agree with, I agree with Jared that they're both related, extremely related, both of them. And again, potential grants, grant riding, grants for parks, rivers or whatever, you know, one could work with Texas Parks Wildlife or work with TCQ or whatever, GBRA. And they'd have more people to discuss and then to, they could probably, you know, fan out and say, okay, you take grant riding, I'll take care of this, you know? I think it'd be, it just, I think it'd keep it simpler. And then everybody, and then we got, then we got twelve people instead of five people or five people. Then we got people that don't show up. We got, still got people there.
I think let's just see if we'll have people left first. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do agree with Jared also. The advisory board is here to serve the city council. Adrian has done a lot of work for the parks this last year. He's kind of carried them. So I commend you.
What, do you have any comments about the combination?
The council, I mean, there's power in having a small group and there's power in having a large group. And there's disadvantages and advantages for both.
I just think it's a good thing that these people communicate. That way the park and the river could communicate with each other. We're all together on, and it makes, it makes it easier for me. They, we just hit it for one board and they say, we recommend this for our park and river. It's, it's just one report. Keeps it simple.
Can I say something? The parks board had year COVID, nobody there. Airplane shut down. And then after that, there was a problem with leadership on parks board. And now that it's becoming more stable. And I think if you want more members in the parks board, you can go down to the parks and see who's used them. And if you see families that were using the parks over and over again, then hey, you'd be a good person to be on our parks. There's a lot of people in this town that not know these boards exist. And they would like to be invited to be on them.
Dorothy, did you have a comment?
I was gonna ask, we might know when the next parks meeting is.
So they had planned to meet, I believe, every month, Wednesdays, the first Wednesday of every but those, those we published on the newsletter, on city website. And mayor, if we're accepting comments, there's been many comments in the chat. I can provide a transcript to city council after the meeting.
Oh, thank you. So do we need a motion to table this one or is somebody gonna motion to accept it or what?
I make a motion to table until we get a poll from the Parks Board and the River Advisory Board on wanting to combine or not, would they be willing to serve on both boards?
A second.
Well, I mean, I'd word it a little different than that. Just say discussion, action among members to combine the both boards.
I would like a poll.
So you want, you mentioned a poll on the members serving on both boards.
Yes, on the parks board, would you like to combine along with the river board?
Gotcha.
Yes or no?
Not the members, you want to serve on both, the river.
No, like would you be willing to combine boards with the river board? Yes or no? If it is combined, would you still be willing to serve? Yes or no?
I think it'd be best personally, I don't, you know, we're council. I think it'd be best to have a discussion with, with both boards and have a discussion instead of a poll because we're not involved in, because we're, we make the decision. I think, I think if we do, do table it, we do discuss it with both the park and the river boards. I think it needs to be a discussion, not a poll separately from us. Because we need, I want, well, I want to, I want to have a discussion with them.
Well, just go to their meeting.
I don't, I just want to make, I said, I, I don't, I say discussion. Well, go ahead, make a motion. I mean, I, I think.
So there is a motion to table this item. And a second. Mike, how do you vote?
Well, I don't like to poll. I want a discussion with the council, with the, with the, with the council, with advisory boards.
See, like the river.
So do you want to table it or not? Yes or no?
Table it, but I, I don't, I want the discussion to be with the council, with the advisory board.
The only motion was to table, you can't.
Yeah, just table it.
There was no accompanying portion of the motion.
Just a table? I agree with that.
Sam, would you like to table the motion?
Table the motion, yes, for now.
Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, so we will move on to, and then there is gonna be a river meeting at the end of the month.
On Thursday.
Thursday.
Yes, at one.
Here in, in the court.
Yes, here at one to be able to.
They are as well.
Okay. Okay, so adopt ordinance number two thousand twenty-two oh seven nineteen. This involves the use of the child safety fund as allowed under one oh two point zero one four of the code of criminal procedure. And that is in your packet. And so council member Villalobos is organizing a bicycle rodeo. And we would like to use those funds to help fund the bicycle rodeo by buying helmets and so forth. So would you like that?
Oh, sure.
Are they restricted?
Yes. So I, you know, along with the mayor and Adrian, in order to like, you know, to try to utilize these funds with school starting and also to incorporate an event in the city that will bring our officers together, our volunteer fire department together, is to have a bicycle rodeo. Nobody's, there's not gonna be loose livestock and lassos going on. It's just an obstacle course. So the obstacle course will start through the silos. There'll be like stop signs. The kids or young, you know, young adults will learn how to use their.
As a precursor to doing this, we need to approve the ordinance. And then we can have the discussion on this. But what we need to do is approve that first ordinance and then have the discussion.
Gotcha.
So, so there's, there's an ordinance in there. If we can get a motion second on that and get approved, then we can launch.
Do we have to read the ordinance?
This is the make a motion approval, ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash zero seven dash one nine.
That's what the motion would do.
Do we need to read it?
Is that it right, right up there?
Yep, yeah, that's it.
I make a motion, can I make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I make the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two zero seven nineteen to expand the use of child safety fees allowed under one oh two point zero one four of the code of criminal procedure.
I second that. Okay, you beat me. That's all right, you have it, Jen, it's yours.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on the ordinance?
I had a question about B, the expend the money for the program designed to enhance child safety. Could that money be spent on, say, putting crosswalks, painting a crosswalk, say, from the park, from Fannin Street? That would be something that I would think would enhance child safety. Could, because from Fannin Street to the park to crosswalk, you can't, can't even see it. Would that be an example of something designed to enhance child safety?
B or C, I think, would be applicable to that scenario.
You wait, what?
Within section one, items B or C could be applicable to that scenario.
Okay, I like that.
Where are these funds coming from?
So the funds come from, Caldwell County collects a small fee as part of the code of registration. And those funds go into restricted account under this code of criminal procedure that describes how those are used. We
Twenty-three dollars.
And in no way, shape or form is this bicycle rodeo going to expand the total amount? So if you would like to spearhead a crosswalk, go ahead on. So like, if I may continue?
Just a minute. We've got to finish voting.
If we, if we can vote on this one.
Yeah, yeah.
So we are just talking about passing this ordinance. Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Sonya made the motion and Jen seconded it. So the motion carries. Okay, so now Okay, so now we can move on to approve the use of the child safety fund to host a child safety event. And we're going to talk about two different ones. The two thousand twenty-two bicycle rodeo. Now.
There you go. We're ahead of ourselves.
So the obstacle course will start through the silos. They'll turn, there's, uh, you know, they'll have to drive over. I'm sure we have a little dip in the road somewhere just to, for safety. There'll be a brake check, make sure the helmet fits properly. There'll be a fluorescent shirt that will be given for safety. So just to finish the obstacle course, uh, the constables will be here and are also going to do like a safety identification card for the parents. Also, um, there's going to be backpacks given away with also additional, uh, safety, um, pamphlets and guidance in the backpacks. We're also coordinating this along with the mayor and I, Adrian, along with Judge Delion, the Martindale Fire Department for volunteers and the Martindale Police Department. And anybody that would like to help? August thirteenth from ten to twelve. There's also if. The voice line. Can I talk about the house fair, how that's going on at this point?
Well, I think it just, yeah.
So it'll just be from ten, ten to twelve. Once, since we've done this, it'll go live on the internet, uh, on the city webpage tomorrow. And there's already a flyer created and now we'll just start advertising.
Um, I had a question then. We've talked a lot about special use permits or specific use perm, permits then. Will a permit have to be applied for and released from the city? It is a city activity on city streets.
The city council too.
True.
I think it's a twenty-five or thirty-five dollar charge then.
The city wouldn't charge itself or put itself through a permitting process.
Okay, so that monies wouldn't need to be paid for out of the, uh, fund, restricted fund that we're speaking of. Since it's a city sponsored a bit, then we would.
Not, not for the purpose of a permit fee, but there will likely be expenditures related to officer time, um, salaries. And then also if there's equipment that needs to be purchased or, um, I know at one point we're talking about, a giveaway of bicycle safety equipment, like helmets and other things. Those, those would be expended from this fund.
I missed that she said constables.
There is a constable that's going to set up here free of charge, not a charge to the city, to give out safety IDs.
If they want, you know, if there's, if it had, you know, you want to do bicycle helmets, other, any sort of public safety enhancement sort of stuff, um, it could be associated. But not necessarily a permit in this case.
That's all I had to ask.
Oh, okay, so we will need to, uh, have a motion if this, from someone, if we would like, if the city would like to host this event. So the cost that we're wanting to top for the child safety fund is for the helmets and the T-shirts and things like that. There's a few other things we're going to get donated. So.
I make a motion that we approve the use of the child safety fees fund to host a child safety event to represent the city of Martindale at the, oh, for the, just for the bicycle rodeo.
Yeah, just the bicycle.
Yeah, to host child safety event, the twenty twenty-two bicycle rodeo.
I'll second that motion.
All right, is there any more discussion about the bicycle rodeo? Okay, three and none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries.
And vote against kids.
Okay, now.
Mike.
Now to, we are asking the city to sponsor the River Appreciation Day. This is in full swing already. So, um, where the child safety fund would, would come into play in this particular item would be if we wanted to purchase, uh, life vests to go for like very young children to go into the river. But we would use the fund for this.
Right.
How, how, how many vests do you think you would, do you have an estimate?
I think like, I think like the helmets that we talked, I know we talked about like fifty and then fifty and then whatever we did not use, then we would, uh, it would be in the police department. Like say if there was people, uh, you know, um, in the parks and they had small children and the officer noticed, hey, they're in the water. You know what, here's, here's a vest, make sure your child is protected. Or, you know, same thing with the reusable cups. Those will, you know, hopefully we'll have enough that our officers will have some. And instead of it being punitive, you know, it could be a moment to educate.
I make a motion that we approve to use the child safety fees fund for, to represent the city of Martindale at the River Appreciation Day.
I second that. It's just for life vests, right? Or what is it?
Well, using the child safety fund, um, so.
For education.
For education purposes. I think this got worded a little differently than what we had intended.
To represent, because they would have like a stand giving away the, the life vests, you know, it could even be a whistles.
But now this would, this event would also be hosted by the city of Martindale.
I think that needs to be in a motion. If it's a motion, I think that'd be fine.
Can we borrow funds from the election line item to help pay for the thing?
Well, this, this is a.
For some other things, so we didn't word this correctly.
What's the concern with this? Yeah, so this, this is a river, river day, River Appreciation Day. There's, there's going to be a public safety, um, child safety component to that.
Yeah, well, I mean, that'd be child, but I mean.
No, let me explain, please.
Yes.
So when we were, um, working this out, we were talking about funding more than just life vests. So we were trying to find out where we could take money from and divert it to, uh, hosting this event. And so now we didn't word the.
I think it's covered under one oh two zero one four, Code of Criminal Procedure. I think because it's, this is.
Could we remake the motion to?
Yeah, I'll send it.
Uh, where are you going to make the motion?
Well, I think.
I think we.
There might be limits on this because there, in public comment earlier tonight, one was here mentioning that there's going to be a Tahano ban and other things. So city's not paying a child safety program for Tahano.
Can I, can I make some clarity here? So whenever we did the planning, there's going to be a River Appreciation Day. Our Martindale, Sam Marcus River Advisory Board is going to be recognizing the river stewards who have been, uh, tirelessly every weekend taking out debris from the river. Every weekend. Along with, there's educational booths that are going to be there from the river. Our booth that we would have would be for the life vests. We do not have a Tahano ban scheduled. The, these disposable containers that I bought, I've bought a hundred and fifty of them with my own money, which, which I don't mind, but that are going to be given out. And a lot of this stuff it is, but what we needed support from the city is that since the awards are coming from the River Advisory Board, the city does want to acknowledge, I'm assuming the city does want to acknowledge the good stewards and everything that they're doing, uh, in here. And that we do want to protect our river with everything that's been going on in phase one and the different parks as a way to educate our community and our visitors is host this River Appreciation Day.
I don't know if non-disposable containers or, oh, or awards would qualify under the use of these.
When I spoke to the mayor, when we spoke, when we met, there, in the election fund, there was funds in there that were not expended during the election.
We didn't word this properly. We needed another line. I, we.
Oh, are you talking about just the general use of general funds? Is not non-restrict, okay.
That's fine. Insofar as, as these funds are being used to purchase life vests.
That's okay.
Then, yeah, I mean, that, that, that enhances child safety and enhances public safety. We, we've got our code buzzwords there. So that's fine.
Yeah.
Then, then if we want to go above and beyond something that addresses these, the language of the code, then, yeah, I mean, the council has authority to dip into other funds that are available and use those.
How about the edu, like an educational fund for the young people about littering? I mean, would that be considered part of the child? I mean, you're educating young people with young ages, you need to not throw trash in the river, which I think. Use a non-disposable container.
That one might get trash in the river to public safety. There's a connection there, but.
Okay, I'll just, I just threw it out there.
You can, you can use the funds for programs designed to enhance child safety, health or nutrition, including child abuse prevention and intervention and drug and alcohol abuse prevention. Or expend the additional money for programs designed to enhance public safety and security.
I think that's, covers it. You're busting beer bottles on the river and you cut your foot open, that's safety. I'm not the expert.
So what's?
Well.
I think we're safe.
All right, I rescind my motion. Somebody else move.
What's the ask? Are we asking to approve the use of child?
Yeah, that's what we're, that's a question.
Life vests and the education program? Are we looking for funds and general funds?
We, well, also we're going to ask for general funds, so we did not add that into the agenda. So at this point, um, the way that the agenda is worded, we could use, we're just asking for child safety funds. So if that's all we're asking for.
Okay, let's just want to just table eight point two to represent the city.
I don't know if we need to do that.
No. Yeah.
That would, we might just need to hold a special session.
So we could use the child safety funds for specifically?
Well, toward the life vests. We can't use it for everything else that we were going to ask.
Okay, all right, I make a motion to approve to use the child safety fees fund for the River Appreciation Day to purchase life vests for children.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, so then.
Council meeting to address the expenditure of the general fund. Item secondly. If, if we need to, there might also be opportunity for us to, we have a spending limit, you and I, according to purchasing policy, um, regarding the sort of general funds, so.
We could then discuss that.
We can discuss that later this evening or we can schedule a special council meeting to do what.
Yeah, we also.
That timely matter.
The thing to. Engineer representative.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, we will move on to number nine. Review record management project charter. So Adrian was tasked with coming up with the charter for how we would manage our records. And this task mentions all of the city officers of the, to be into this charter. Adrian, do you want to talk to this?
Sure, so, hi everyone, city secretary. So as additional to my role as city secretary, my role in the city is also the records management officer. And so if you've noticed, if you walked through our front doors of city hall, we have a bunch of records, a bunch of filing cabinets. And if you take a deeper dive into our, um, Peter files, we have roughly, we go to the, on the last page, you'll see how many files we have under our city secretary folder in our home directory. We have roughly, I want to say eighteen thousand records that are not organized or documents. Some of our duplicates, some of them don't have the right naming, some of them are named the wrong way or. And so a bunch of records are just dumped into our file server, which in return also creates a, costs the city more money. And as recent conversations, the, the size of our file server is too large and that we can't bear that expense. And so many cities along, in the city, well, many cities in Texas and even throughout the country have even organizations that dedicate themselves to records management. And so this is only me following their recommendations, um, me creating a, a system that works for us in the city. And so what this project charter is, having city council direct city staff, as the city staff is city officers, to come together and assign, record responsibilities to each other and our departments. And so as you noticed, our, on the left-hand side in page, I want to say fifty-nine? Fifty-six. Page fifty-six, on the left-hand side, under projects team is all the members who'll be participating in this discussion group. And I'll get into what we'll be reviewing in a minute. But all of our city officers, uh, on the right-hand side is personnel who will be directing, basically instructing those officers to create, create this discussion group, almost like a advisory board.
If you will, having this charter sponsored by the city council helps achieve buy-in and commitment to achieving the goals of the charter group. That way it's not Adrian hat in hand asking for some help. It's Adrian showing a piece of paper under someone else and the city council wants you to do this. Because this is a, a time intensive, somewhat laborious activity to go through these records.
Right, thank you. And so, um, what we'll be reviewing is in the following pages. And page fifty-seven through sixty-one is these local government retention schedules. I did not post the whole schedule of each section because that would be hundreds of pages. Now, um, we would digest these in after city council meetings. So if this passes, we would discuss, um, the GR schedule. And so the GR schedules is general records. That's just an acronym for general records. And each of these general records have a record name, record title, the description of the record, and how long do we keep this record? And so a big responsibility of every delegate of the city is to not only retain the record and name it properly, but it's also to remove it in a correct period of time. And so for instance, these agendas, we keep them for two years. Once the minutes are posted, um, you keep them for ninety days. Our audio visual recordings are permanent. And so, um, this goes for city complaints, utility billing, uh, court records, uh, traffic stops, um, includes accident reports with minors and the, this range. It includes accident reports with minors, and this ranges the entire city organizational-wide. And so this even includes our own cell phones. And with so much data going around, especially with the internet, it's easy to overload our, you know, our, our document system, our data system, but it's also easy to, if we all come in a alliance to name it and work together, it's easy to organize our database. The advantage that we have is that we're a smaller city and we're a younger city, unlike the city of San Antonio, who has to go back and look at a hundred-year records. We have, you know, a couple, maybe forty years to, to look at, and some of it has already been organized and destroyed properly. And so what I'm asking for city council is to direct officers of the city to come together and calmly agree, almost another committee on designating records to each staff. So it would have a an original Excel page, I have examples sent to Jared in his USB drive, where the mayor's responsible for these records, city administrator is responsible for these records, it's, yeah.
Yeah, as an example, you have all these different record types of different retention schedules, assigning, assigning custodianship over those record schedules and placing as part of an improvement to our records retention policy, the locations of where all those records will be stored, how they will be stored, and making according to those retention schedules.
And it's.
Permanent, some, there's hundreds of types of records under, under that, that catalog, and more efficiently managed, which I think will have a long-term strategic benefit to the city when it comes to what was, how decisions were made and reached, what are the policies and procedures. One glaring example is our code of ordinance online has holes and complication and other things. Touches every part of, of the city and, and it serves it, it provides the community. If our records are out of whack, it makes it that much more difficult and really slows down our, our ability to be efficient and effective in our jobs and responsibility. So, this is a big, big task. Adrian's well cut out to lead us in this after review.
Just for clarity, are we going to get, like, you're saying that those are all the records, right? Right now?
Record types.
The record types.
So if you see on the left-hand side, it says GR.
So that includes agenda minutes.
Yeah, and if you just go through, even at the very bottom, it says chemicals applied in the office. And so those are pretty extreme, but the description helps a lot. So using the control find feature that most computers today have, you've kind of guessed, you know, the record, the nature of your record, and you'll find it. And it will just lead you there, and, and on the right-hand side on the top, I made an example, if you would go to the very top, Jared. All you have to do is right-click or click on the, the location link, it'll take you exactly where to store that file. It's made simple for, for users in the city. It all requires a brief thirty-minute orientation with the employees. The only issue is that I don't want to create jobs that do not apply to certain positions. So where it says custodian, I assign myself these agenda and minutes issues, but for instance, that organizational chart, that is likely responsibility of the city administrator, not so much.
That's right, yes.
And so what we'll be doing is in this custodian cells, we'd be assigning or affirming the responsibilities to a certain position that is currently exists in the city.
Accountability is key. And we're all hold ourselves accountable.
Accountability and the speed of finding the document or whatever you need to do. That looks great.
That way you have some consistency, you know, if Adrian wins the lottery and says, thanks, I'll go start a Bitcoin farm in Montana, you know, then where's our records?
Gotcha. That's good.
So, okay, so do we need my question?
So the motion is in the, even page?
Yes.
Fifty-five.
See, I make a motion that the record management charter be signed by all prescribed names and a signature page to affirm the responsibilities and conditions assigned to municipal officers mentioned in this charter.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion?
I wanted, I wanted to know, how did the selection of the support personnel come about?
Support personnel, so usually, is this?
Assigned, no, I'm stating directly what's writ, what's written right there.
Support personnel, so this is actually a template from, most organizations follow. Your bosses, your supervisors, and.
Sponsors, if you will.
Right. And so, as officers of the city, we respond to city council. So that's how I came to, to, to assign city council to keep us in check that, hey, you really should be following this.
And so, I, like, how are, how are we paired up with the person that we're with?
Oh, it's, it's not a pairing. No, 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 no. It could.
It's just two lists, a name.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought I was going to be overseeing Jared Anabo's record retention.
No, no, no.
Let me see their records. Oh, yeah. I was like, I don't, I don't want him. I don't want to. I was just making jokes, I was like, that's going to be a lot of homework.
I've got a whole another list, a bunch of folders.
He owns the meal.
My folders aren't really.
Okay, gotcha.
We're just there.
That was my only question. Just the way it was, just the way it was kind of next to each other.
But it's good for us to understand.
Yeah.
So that in case we need to go and search for a file.
Yeah. Gotcha.
A bit of blame for it's missing.
Yeah.
Blame you.
Gotcha.
I'll build it, all three of you, right, all four, one, two, you're not, you're not getting them to get paid. You, you, you are paid.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Aye.
Okay, Sonia is an aye. Mike?
Aye.
Okay, so that's four ayes, the motion carries. Okay, is there anything to add to the future items?
Yes, I have one. I want to add in second session, a discussion about the Cochran lawsuit. Property lawsuit, property lawsuit. Thanks for that clarification.
Anything else? I wrote down dark sky ordinance, so we don't forget about it.
So would this be a good time to request a special meeting to be able to, oh, we're not going to talk about it.
Well, we can talk about it as soon as we need to.
We need a special meeting, we need to add what we need to approve. Engineering.
When would you like a special meeting? When would you like a special meeting?
Seventy-two hours.
Can, can you attend a special meeting?
On Friday?
Oh, to do.
Monday?
Well, I don't think we need.
Oh, we do.
I bought my wife tickets to see James Taylor on Friday.
Oh, you can.
They're Tuesday?
Monday.
Monday.
Yeah.
Let's see, this is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
What do we need for, for this and, and?
Well, if you have a special meeting, you have to have four city council members and the adjournment. It's an extra.
Do we need a special meeting for this? Do we really, for the, for the engineering, do we need it? I mean.
The, the big thing is we, we, we should make that straw pool official as soon as possible.
Okay, I think we need, we'll do it.
We could, it could wait till the next regularly scheduled meeting if need be, the kicker is if as, if mayor and I get into discussion about the use of general funds and our purchasing policy and things related to events with the River Appreciation Day, and we come to it with consultation from our attorney that we need a city council approval for somewhat what we decide to do, that would need a special meeting, and that would want to happen as soon as possible because it's scheduled for what, August sixth?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, so we need to do that.
You probably want to do that pretty soon.
Yeah, that one.
So does it have to be at night? Can it be in the daytime?
You're.
You come during the day?
I work during the.
Oh, okay.
Whatever.
Yeah, yeah, I work during the day.
What, a council appreciation lunch? Oh, yeah.
Should we say two o'clock on Monday? Because then Jared will be here. He's a captive.
So this, this is for the, for the River Appreciation Day.
And if, and if, and if we can, we'll do that, too.
We'll do both things.
Okay, I understand if the.
And maybe we can talk about that lawsuit soon.
No.
Be going scheduled.
That's up to him.
Can you get away at two?
He's gonna.
Good, I'll be there.
Uh-huh, I'll make a ring.
He's going to want to talk about that at the same time?
Up to the, it's up to the attorney, he's the.
You can put it on, if I can wrap things up by then, then we'll be good to go.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn at nine thirty-two.
I second that.
And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed?